Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Edina City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 4, 2024. It is 7:03 PM. And just a reminder, as a follow-up to what Director Bennerott had to say, there are folks watching this meeting virtually. We encourage that during COVID and post-COVID in this post-pandemic environment. We're allowing folks to participate remotely. Sometimes they have two opportunities to participate remotely. Community comment, they always have that opportunity. And when we have a public hearing like we do tonight, folks can participate remotely or live for that type of situation as well for a public hearing. But remember that during community comment, you cannot comment on something that's otherwise on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. Folks that are in the virtual world, there's your contact information that you should use, whether you're watching on cable TV or at edinamn.gov live meetings or on Facebook. There's the way you get to our operators, and the operator will bring you into Director Bennerott, who will bring you into the council for your comments. And so having provided the information, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll. Clerk Allison.
Actually, Deputy City Clerk.
Oh, excuse me. I didn't even look down there.
It's okay. No worries.
So sorry.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
We were just with her upstairs, and I just assumed she was down here, too. Thank you.
That's all good. Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. So I better work on my situational awareness a little bit better, I guess. All right. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, folks.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have published for the council and for our residents a form of meeting agenda for the meeting this evening. Is there anyone on the council or from the staff standpoint that wishes to modify the meeting agenda in any form or fashion? Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. The meeting agenda is adopted. Now we are at community comment, and so we'll first go to some of our fellow residents that are in the audience that wish to address the council on matters of concern to them. And then we'll give folks at home a chance to kind of gear up and get ready to call in if they haven't called in already on community comments. So let's go to the folks in the audience. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing? Yes, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Sickert. I live at 4311 Cornelia Circle, residence of Edina. Tonight, during the work session, there was a review of Mr. Scott Neal's performance objectives for 2024. The agenda was changed so that that did not start until 6:18 this evening. That conversation adjourned at 6:50 this evening. What I'd like to call to your question, to your attention, is that you actually listen to that conversation. And one thing of particular note is that on two separate occasions, January and March of this year, four specific performance objectives were addressed to be included in Mr. Neal's objectives, and the memo that he shared for that in preparation for that meeting included none of those, nor was there a specific discussion of those individual goals that were laid out. I find this disturbing, and I recommend, highly recommend that you listen to that work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sickert. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. Council and Mayor Hovland, my name is Ryan Green, and I'm a resident at 4904 East Sunny Slope Road, just across the street. And I'm here just to, real quick, put in a plea that you guys put some extra effort into the pedestrian right-of-way or pedestrian walkways along 50th, specifically between Brown Dale or Wooddale Park and Highway 100. I've got a small army of children. We go to OLG for both mass and for school. And watching my kids make that trek from East Sunny Slope over to OLG is stressful, to say the least. So that's my first request. And then my second, and I'd be remiss not to point out that Chad Milner has been very responsive to my requests for help. But right now, we've got some utility construction along that same path, and we've had the sidewalks blocked by construction, what are they, construction barrels?
Barrels, yeah.
Right. And so I've done my best to try and get those moved, and they have been moved. It would be nice if on this, the rest of this project and future projects, if contractors could provide an alternate right-of-way for pedestrians.
Yeah, good thoughts. I thought your email was appreciated. Your email was appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them? All right. Director Bennerott, anybody online? Okay. All right. Our practice is that with respect to these comments that have been made under concerns of residents, we'll answer them by Friday on the city website, and then our city manager follows up with respect to the comments that were made at the prior meeting, in this case, about two weeks ago. And with respect to anything that took place there that needed a response, and he'll supplement the Friday response with an oral response this evening. So I'll turn now to Manager Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Two questions from our previous meeting. First was, when do drinking fountains open at outdoor parks? How often are they cleaned? The city's park maintenance division strives to have drinking waters, fountains in parks active around Memorial Day. Before that, they're subject to risk of freezing and destruction. So Memorial Day is when we try to turn things on, maybe the week of Memorial Day. Occasionally, individual sites can no longer depend, can't do that, depending on challenges encountered during the process. They may have broke during the winter. Drinking fountains are cleaned when they're open and have regular checks on them throughout the season. And people can use the Edina 311 app to report issues with drinking fountains or any other park problem. Second question was, why are the closed signs gone from the Grandview Bridge? There are six closed signs alerting pedestrians that the Grandview Bridge is closed, not yet open yet. Recently, someone unhooked the chains holding up two of those signs. City staff have reconnected the chains and will reinforce them so they are not easily unhooked. That's what I have.
I think one other question was, as I recall, it may have been redundant to the meeting before, was about flags at half-staff. How do we make, when the governor decides we're going to go to half-staff on a flag situation because of an event that's occurred or the death of an individual, how do we go about determining when we're going to move our flags to half-staff in the city of Edina?
Yes, we did. We answered that question at the last council meeting. And we have a protocol about how we respond. First of all, we respond whenever, when we receive a notice from the governor's office, which is how they distribute that information, that information goes directly to Jennifer Bennerott. Jennifer Bennerott spreads that information out to all of the different facilities who have flags, giving them not only the direction, but also the reason of something that they can print off and tape to their window, because we often get questions about why flags are lowered. One thing we have not done in the past is on facilities where we do not have 24/7 or 24 or seven days a week staffed, we have not been bringing people in on overtime just to come in and lower the flag. We are reconsidering that, however, and looking at ways we can better use the staff that we have already that are here 24/7 and during the weekends, and with the hope of changing our policy and having the flag up and down at the time we get the notice.
All right. Thanks for that. Yes, Member Agnew.
Thank you. I think we had also received a question about, again, about the tree ordinance. So I think maybe just a comment to that is that we have that on our agenda tonight, and we'll be talking about that. But I do remember a community comment about that again last week.
We do. Sometimes, I mean, part of what we take care to do in this setting is respond to questions. If people have statements they're wanting to make about how they wish things could be or not be, we don't generally provide an answer to that in the same way. But in this case, yes, we did have some question or questions, I think, about the tree ordinance. Staff worked on the tree ordinance and have an ordinance in front of the council tonight that you think it's the last thing on your agenda later tonight.
Good. Any other questions from council members? All right. Very good. Let's move on to the next portion of the agenda, and that's the adoption of the consent agenda. I think there were a couple of members that were interested in removing 6C, Resolution 2024-37, which provided for the sale of some general obligation bonds. So with respect, is there any other item that any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda, or a staff member, other than 6C? All right. With the exception of 6C, is there a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of all of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion, with the exception of item 6C. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We have an approved number of items on the consent agenda, and I'll just turn back to Resolution 2024-37, which provides for the sale of up to $32,730,000 in general obligation bonds. And I'll go first to Member Rissler.
Thank you. And my concern was just wanting to have a little bit more clarity on the 5.4 million that would be going to the Eden Wilson redevelopment TIF projects.
Yes, thank you, council member, for your question. Who I have here tonight with me is Nick Anhut from Ellers. He's our municipal advisor for the city of Edina. So I'll call him up to help answer that question.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Nick Anhut with Ellers &amp; Associates, some financial advisors to the city of Edina, and helping with this bond issuance. The, when the council approved establishing the Eden Wilson TIF district, there were a number of public improvements that were going to enhance the roadways and walkways surrounding the TIF district itself, which is the building outside the front of this city hall, the Mason Green project. So 5.4 million of the amount that's anticipated for this year's bonds are going to be backed by the revenues derived from that project and that TIF fund. And they're going to go towards paying for those roadway traffic safety enhancements. Specifically, 2 million is going to go towards reimbursing last year's construction expenses that were incurred for the roundabouts that were installed outside of that project. And then 3.2 million of that amount is going to fund this year's projects that have already been awarded for the Grange to the east of Dale improvements that are happening. So the contracts and the work is underway, and these bonds are going to provide a permanent source of funding for those. And they are going to be paid entirely from the revenues that are produced from the Eden Wilson TIF district, from the Mason Green project.
Member Rissler.
Thank you. One of the things that I've been thinking about, and I'm learning about TIF, so as we go, there's interest that will be accrued and a more expense, just in terms of the whole process. True? Or is that?
Well, when we pay back bonds, we do have an interest rate on that, so we need to repay that interest.
Okay. And I have looked online, looked at information from the state, which talks about calculating TIF and TIF districts and all of that, and what you look for in order to assure yourself that you're going to come out ahead. Do interest costs ever factor into those calculations?
We do, actually. So when the council was presented with establishing the TIF district, it established a budget for that fund, what it could use that for, the types of projects. Inside of that, there was an allocation made towards interest expense. So there was a forecast based on potential future interest that could be, depending on the type of financing that's engaged. We anticipate that these bonds are going to accrue interest somewhere in between 4% to 5%. We won't know that until we get the bids back in July. But that is in excess of what was estimated within the original budgets for the TIF fund.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Anhut? All right. Member Rissler, you want to move the matter?
I just, I have.
Oh, yes.
No question, but just a comment. I do think that just the way that this has happened, I think it's worth just highlighting, we had a resident, I believe it was Rich Green, talk about pedestrian pathways right outside here in front of Sunny Slope. And when we talked about, when we approved the Mason Green project, we had a discussion about, well, what other public realm benefits could we make? There were several residents from Sunny Slope that were concerned about pedestrian traffic, concerned about how difficult it is to get out of their neighborhood and turn left or right. And we discussed how we could leverage those TIF dollars to address some of those issues. And so I do think it's just, this is a neat opportunity to be able to say, this is kind of full circle, how in this particular instance, the process worked. We approved this project. We were able to leverage these TIF dollars. We expanded the district a little bit in order to do this. And we're at a point now where we've done, I'll roughly say, half the projects, and then we have the other group now to do. And I just think it's a neat way to highlight how we've been able to use those dollars to address those issues.
Thank you, Member Pierce. All right. Member Rissler, would you care to move the adoption of Resolution 2024-37?
Still moved.
She has a second?
Second.
Member Rissler moves. Member Jackson seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-37 that authorizes the sale of up to $32,730,000 in general obligation bonds for the various projects that were just on the screen. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Resolution 2024-37 is adopted. Thank you for being here, both of you. All right. Now, we are in the next portion of the agenda. It's the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. We have one item in this portion of the agenda, and folks in our community may have been hearing a bit about the proposed Metro Transit E-Line Bus Rapid Transit expansion of their system. And in that system, it moves alphabetically, A, B, C, D, so all those other four lines have already been built and are prospering. And tonight, we have Adam Smith here, the manager of Metro Transit's BRT projects with us, and I think Eric Thompson may be back there as well. Yes, he's back there as well. And we've been engaging with them in active meetings down at 50th and France as we think about how to get through the construction of this project. And so I think for our residents and our merchants, they're particularly appreciative that you're here this evening. We're getting it from you and working with you firsthand and trying to compress that construction schedule so that we provide the least amount of impact possible. And I know you're cognizant of that as well. So thanks for being here, Mr. Smith, and look forward to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update this evening on the E-Line Bus Rapid Transit project. My name is Adam Smith. I'm manager of BRT Projects with Metro Transit, and I am joined by Eric Thompson, who's our lead community outreach coordinator for the E-Line project. So I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview of the project as a whole this evening, and then delve into a little bit more specifics around what is being constructed in Edina, talk about some of the construction detours, phasing, and timelines for the E-Line, business access during construction, and how we are communicating and will continue to communicate throughout construction of the E-Line project. So first, a little bit about the E-Line corridor. It's about a 13-mile project running primarily along France Avenue, Hennepin Avenue, and University Avenue and Fourth Street. It'll make 34 stops between Southdale Transit Center here in Edina and the Metro Green Line Westgate Station, which is just over the Minneapolis-St. Paul border in St. Paul. One of the things about the E-Line is it's really focusing on strengthening some of the connections between a lot of regional destinations, so Southdale, 50th and France, Uptown, Downtown Minneapolis, and the University of Minnesota. It represents the substantial replacement of Route 6, which is currently one of Metro Transit's highest ridership local bus routes in our system. And construction is occurring this year and next year toward a launch of the E-Line in late 2025. So a little bit of background about the arterial bus rapid transit program. So this is a program that is designed to take, you know, these high-performing local bus routes and make them faster, more reliable, easier to use. So one of the things it does, one of the ways in which it does that is, you know, we have two to three stations per mile. We have preboarding fare payment for faster stops, higher-capacity buses, and boarding through all doors. An important part is also these high-tech, high amenity, secure stations throughout the corridor, and then the service component, the faster, frequent, and all-day So focusing a little bit more on what is being constructed. So at an E-Line station, we see sort of a range of amenities, shelters with heating and lighting, benches, bike racks, signage with real-time transit information, and then security features and additional street lighting in some situations. The platforms themselves often create additional sidewalk space, and Metro Transit prioritizes snow clearance on BRT platforms to help support walkability around station areas. Along with this project, we also have a number of improvements that we're making for safer and more accessible pedestrian crossings at intersections along the corridor. Turning a little bit more specifically to Edina, there are eight E-Line stations that will be constructed in Edina, some of them on the border between Minneapolis and Edina along France Avenue. Five of these intersections do include some of those safety and accessibility improvements funded by Hennepin County. Seven of the eight stations are anticipated to be constructed this year in 2024, and we are planning to have shelters with heating and lighting open for Route 6 customers in advance of this coming winter. So even as we're waiting to complete the rest of the E-Line, we want to make those open to customers as soon as we can. Construction at that eighth station, a Southdale Transit Center, is planned to occur next year, as will some of those finishing touches, installation of signage, fare collection equipment in the run-up to the service launch of the E-Line in late So turning a little bit to France Avenue construction, we developed construction staging plans during the design phase, working extensively with our local agency partners, including staff from the city of Edina. And one of the approaches is that construction at five France Avenue intersections will overlap so that they share a single southbound detour. France Avenue will remain open to northbound traffic throughout construction, and that southbound detour will be on Xerxes, really geared towards regional traffic to help avoid confusion and provide continuous access to and through the area. I'll mention, too, that local access to both northbound and southbound France will remain open between those station intersections. So, you know, if you're somewhere between those intersections that you see, and you're just looking to make a really short trip, a couple of blocks, you can still do that in the southbound direction on France. And we also will be setting up temporary signals at 39th Street and 60th Street to help accommodate the detour. In terms of the general construction approach that you can expect to see, in general, we're looking to start with the first phase at each intersection on the west side, construct the southbound station, any sidewalk and curb ramp improvements occurring on the west side of the intersection, and then once that's done, flipping it, so then focusing on the east side of the intersection. Each of those phases is anticipated to last about five to six weeks at each intersection. And so that will be, and here you can see just a photo of kind of what that looks like as a BRT platform is being constructed. So moving towards our sort of tentative timeline in terms of construction here, one thing I did want to start out by saying is just that any of the lane restrictions or detours that we're talking about will be lifted as work is completed at that intersection. So once work is done at an intersection, of course, traffic will return to normal. We are beginning initial activities to set up temporary signals for next week, which is when we expect that France Avenue detour to begin as well. And then looking kind of more at the intersection-by-intersection basis, France and 44th, we're anticipating to begin the week of July 1. And there you can see sort of the planned detour around 444th Street in that area. Work at France and 47th, scheduled to begin June 17. At 50th and France, we're now looking at starting work there July 1. And during the first phase of construction at that location, there will be a detour of 50th Street, which you can see sort of mapped there. And we have worked now so that 50th Street will be reopened for the second phase of construction at that intersection. France and 54th will be starting a little bit later in the summer, maybe till July, and then France and 58th will be beginning next week, week of June 10. Also mentioned that work at a couple of other stations, France and 62nd Street and Fairview, Southdale Hospital will begin later in this construction season. So a little bit about supporting businesses during construction. Really importantly, pedestrian access to businesses will be maintained during construction. Vehicle access to parking ramps at 50th and France will also be maintained throughout construction. We're also looking at making traffic signal adjustments to help accommodate those detours and really keep vehicles moving to and through these areas. So the overall theme is that businesses will remain open during construction, and of course, we really encourage folks to continue supporting their local businesses. We're working with the 50th and France Business Association around a couple of initiatives, including some additional business access signage, as well as highlighting upcoming events and initiatives in some of our materials. And finally, just kind of how you can stay up to date during construction. Really, the best way is going to be signing up for a weekly newsletter email at our website, metrotransit.org/e-linproject. But we also have a project email address, so you can reach Eric and his team there, as well as a construction hotline. And so, and then Eric will be also sharing additional information through door knocking and posted materials, as well as our general rider alerts through Metro Transit. So that's what I had this evening, but happy to take any questions that folks have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Smith. I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce one of our Met Council representatives. I see her in the background there. I'm getting more situationally aware here. Ms. Cameron, you want to come forward and just introduce yourself? And then, she's one of two reps that represent our city on the Metropolitan Council and is one of our residents.
Yes, that's right, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. So my name is Anjali Mishra Cameron. I represent District 8 on the Metropolitan Council. That includes Edina, St. Louis Park, Hopkins, and a number of suburbs north of there, up to Brooklyn Center, along the Highway 100, 169 corridor. Very happy to work with the E-Line team on this project, and they've done a phenomenal job. So I think I will leave it to them to talk more about the E-Line project. But we are very proud to bring more transportation to Edina and surrounding communities. We work in close partnership with Mayor Hovland and with the team in terms of the staff of the city of Edina to be able to carry these projects forward. So I represent a lot of communities at the Metropolitan Council, and Edina is a phenomenal community. It has been recognized at the Metropolitan Council meetings for how well the city is doing in terms of leading the metropolitan region. So very proud to represent this community. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're all really pleased with the level of commitment that you have made to this position on the Metropolitan Council and to our community as a resident. You've been so highly effective, and it's been a pleasure to have you at all these meetings as we kind of worry about how to get through this construction season down at 50th and France without disturbing small businesses too much. So council members, questions for Mr. Smith at all? Yes. Member Agnew.
Thank you, and thank you so much for the presentation. I think, you know, we've gotten some outreach, and this is really helpful to just understand what will the impact be. How can, you know, residents who want more information, or anyone else, understand all of this that you presented, the timelines? this that you presented, the timelines, what the detours will be, and when we're expected to kind of get back to business as usual, as well as are businesses still open? You know, all those questions that residents might have.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, I think the very best way is to sign up for those weekly newsletter updates at our website, and that is where some of those detour graphics, sort of intersection-by-intersection updates about what's happening in the week to come, here's what we know, here's what we don't know. You know, as you probably know, that construction can be, can be very much in flux as it's affected by weather. We've had a very rainy season so far, but that is going to be the best way for folks to get those weekly updates and really be able to stay on top of things. And then, of course, with more pointed questions, or if they, if folks see something out there that seems, you know, that's not right, or, you know, we need to make sure we're maintaining that temporary pedestrian access in different places. Again, the email address and that construction hotline will be there, too, for some of those more specific questions, and folks are always welcome to email and call that as well.
Awesome, thank you. Is there any static website that folks could go to? I know I'm envisioning myself being like, oh, gosh, is this the weekend or is it not? And I forgot to sign up for the email updates. How do I know how to get to my groomers?
Sure, yeah. So the, the E-Line project has a construction page, and that includes a link to the most recent newsletter. So in case somebody doesn't sign up, or they, you know, deleted it, or whatever it is, they can get there and get that same information. Yep.
Either Mr. Smith or Ms. Cameron may want to come back up, because I think for a lot of folks in the audience this evening, or that may be watching, don't really know about what, what is BRT? And why, why are we expanding all of these BRT lines? And talk a little bit about, you know, the levels of ridership that we've reached in the post-pandemic era because of the nature of that service.
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the big things that we've learned as an agency is, you know, a shift away from kind of the nine-to-five commute-centered trips to really sort of all-day trips serving a wide array of different purposes. So you're into shopping, you're going to appointments, you're going to visit friends. And one of the things that Bus Rapid Transit projects really emphasize is having a frequent, reliable schedule, seven days a week throughout the day. And so that frequency has been really successful on other projects. Some of them, you mentioned, C-Line, D-Line, has been really successful in seeing great ridership gains in those corridors, and, and a lot of that growth is coming at those, you know, midday times, those weekend times. And so, so this package of amenities, this package of improvements that helps speed up the service, make it more reliable, make it more comfortable to use, both when you're waiting, when you're not waiting in a hailstorm, you're waiting under a nice shelter. You know, those are the, those are the kinds of things that are all contributing to make, making these projects successful, and, and we expect the E-Line to follow suit.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Anyone else? Okay, thanks. Yeah, Member Jackson.
So if I'm going down to a link scheme, can I take the BRT there and get home if it runs into overtime?
Yes, absolutely. So, yeah, a lot of our BRT lines often run till, you know, 1, 1:30, maybe even 2:00 in the morning. I'm not ever up that late, so I can't verify that. But, yeah, the, the service span is, is very high on our BRT lines.
Terrific, thank you.
Good. Thanks for being here, both of you. And I think Mr. Nundorf's here in the back, too, and he's been really active down at the 50th and France Association, working with Metro Transit. So he'll probably see you Friday morning, or some of your, some of your team on Friday morning at the meeting. All right, very good. Thanks, Mr. Smith. That concludes that portion of the agenda. We're going to go now to public hearings. As I mentioned earlier, we only have one public hearing matter. And what we'll be doing, this has been our practice during COVID and post-COVID, is that we will take the presentations, the staff presentation, the applicant's presentation, public testimony, but then we leave the public testimony portion that would open for a certain period of time post this evening, and then we'll take it up at our next meeting. So we won't make a decision tonight, but we'll take a lot of information in tonight, and that'll allow us, then, along with the information we get in the interim period, to make a good, well-informed decision a couple of weeks from now. And I'm going to turn now to our, our Director Teague, our Community Development Director, and ask him to introduce the topic.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The public hearing this evening is for a preliminary rezoning, overall development plan, site plan, and subdivision of the Macy's Furniture Store site at 7235 France Avenue, a site that you're all familiar with. The applicant has gone through the sketch plan process a couple of times over the last year. It is guided in our comprehensive plan as a community activity center. This is an area that the comprehensive plan envisions as our most densely developed area. Current zoning on the site is PCD III, Planned Commercial District. Here's a look at the existing site. You can see the underutilized parking lot, large surface parking lot, and the 90,000-square-foot furniture store. This is a look at the first sketch plan, so the idea here hasn't changed all that significantly from the original sketch plan, is to divide the site up into four building pads. Main feature of the project is to connect the promenade to France Avenue. During the sketch plan, the council expressed interest in trying to connect this project with the project that's been approved to the west on the other side of France, either with a, an underpass or overpass. So the applicant revised their plans to accommodate either going under or above. This was the sketch plan that, that the council reviewed earlier this year. Just to give a little update, I spoke with Economic Development Manager Nundorf this evening to get an update on how those discussions have been going with the county. They've had a couple of meetings. Mr. Nundorf has been leading that up, along with Mr. Milner from staff. There's a decision point coming in mid-July, but conversations are ongoing with the possibility of utilizing either of those two options. So the applicant has made a number of revisions from those sketch plans that you took a look at. To go through a few of them, they've increased the setback from the promenade that was an issue that was raised. The previous plans had just a 15-foot setback to the property line. They've revised that to a 35-foot setback. They've added, there's actually three restaurants, more activation of that public space around the building. They've expressed interest in widening the Nine Mile Creek Trail that run, the bike trail that runs along the south lot line from 10 to 15 feet. Of course, that's subject to approval of the watershed district. They've shifted the 11-story building to the south. That's the building along France Avenue. They've reduced the amount of office square footage, added more residential use. So in doing that, in the northwest building, there's less parking. Parking levels have been reduced from four levels to one with that building. They've enhanced the landscaping, added public art. The project will meet the city's sustainability buildings policy. 5% of the parking stalls will have EV charging stations with the ability to increase to 10%. Rooftop solar panels would be installed on the two east buildings, and 10% of all of the housing units within the project would be included for affordable housing. That includes, they've also added an owner-occupied element to this project, so five of the units within that building would be for affordable housing as well. So here is a look at the proposal before the council. Again, the basic elements are still in play. The south, the south and west parcel, this is the 11-story building here. This would include 48,000 square feet of office, 49 units of the senior, senior housing, five of those would be for affordable. There would be about a 10,000-square-foot retail and restaurant space on the main level. The northwest parcel, this would be a seven-story building, about 20,000 square feet of office, 124 apartments within that building, and 8,000 square feet of retail. And then the two eastern parcels, those would be apartments. The, the north would include 223 units, and the south, 176. They've also added this restaurant element on the corner. I'll quickly move through some of the building renderings. The applicant will go through this in much more detail, and they have a 3D fly around the project, so you'll get a better understanding and feel. So I'll just quickly move through there. This request requires a rezoning from that PCD III district to planned unit development. The PUD would ensure that the affordable housing is included within the project and that the sustainability's policy is met. There's also a substantial amount of land that's dedicated to the public here. 45% of the land area would be dedicated to the public for the walking areas, the bike areas, and the vehicular traffic going north and south through the site. In exchange with the PUD, they're requesting flexibility from those PCD III standards. That would include building height, building material, building transparency, first-floor ceiling height, building setbacks, setback from single-family, the nearest single-family home, floor area ratio, and building coverage. There's also a plat associated with this. They're proposing to subdivide the property into three parcels. So just a quick review of the site plan. Again, the, the access points remain the same as they exist today, so access to the site comes off of the, along the south lot line and the north. There would be a north-south vehicular movement through the site. You can see the entries into all four buildings come off this, this middle spine. In terms of, a parking and traffic study was done by WSB. Mallory Fitzpatrick is with us this evening, virtually, to answer any questions that you may have in regard to parking and traffic. But the study concluded that no roadway improvements are needed with this project and that there is adequate parking. Each use itself, each site, meets our code requirement for parking on its own. Overall, there's about 200 spaces over what the code requires, and the applicant will talk about this, but the parking on the main level would be available to the public, so if someone who wanted to use Centennial Lakes or go shopping at the Galleria could park within this, within the public parking spaces that have been dedicated for that use. In terms of landscaping, based on the perimeter of the site, 61 over-story trees would be required. They're proposing to plant 142. 11 existing trees would be saved and 39 removed. There would be, and it did, there would be 414 caliper inches of trees planted here, so we're getting quite an increase in the, the tree canopy compared to existing. Terms of building material, they're proposing manufactured stone and metal panel, and again, the applicant will go through this in a little more detail. They are asking for some flexibility in building materials. The brick and stone element on the first 60 feet of the building is anywhere from 20 to 70% of the building itself. The transparency requirement is between 60 and 75%. We require 75. But again, they will be meeting the sustainable buildings policy for all four buildings, so that does add quite an, quite an expense to the, the project. Initially, they were proposing to divide the property into four sites. They've revised the plat, so it is now just three. The two residential apartments would be on a, share a lot, essentially. Park dedication is required here. The changing from four to three doesn't impact park dedication at all. $5,000 per unit would be required at the time of a building permit. So this graphic indicates the flexibility that they're requesting through the PUD. So on the far right, the, the bold in italics, those are the setbacks that are not met using conventional zoning. So they are meeting the 50-foot setback along France, but setbacks are based on the height of the building, so none of the side or rear setbacks are, are met. The setback to R1 property, based on the height of the building, any building that's over nine stories, it needs to be setback six times the height, so they need a 930-foot setback. This building would be just under 800 feet, and they're also proposing an 11-story building. The building height overlay district allows up to eight stories and 96 feet. The density here is within the, the density range allowed in the comprehensive plan. They're asking for flexibility in the floor area ratio, as well as the first-floor building height and the transparency that I mentioned. The middle column here compares recent PUD, the 70th and France project. So you can see the setbacks within that project are pretty similar to what's proposed in, in that development. That, again, was a site that was divided into four, four, four lots, essentially. That project has a 24-story structure, where this just has 11. The FAR is similar at 2.1 with that project. This is 2.2. So this graphic just demonstrates the setbacks from the property line. Just to give you an idea, again, 34, 35 feet from the promenade, 40 feet for the south building, 49-foot setback to this rear, the south property line, 130 feet, 65 feet for this building along France, and then 50 feet. The separation between buildings would be 60 feet through the site. And I mentioned, this is the nearest R1 property, so this is where that 800-foot setback comes in for the 11-story building. Primary issue to be considered here is the proposal reasonable to justify a PUD rezoning for the site. An argument can be made, both for and against. Staff has provided the council with alternatives to consider for approval and denial. This is our pyramid of discretion. City has complete discretion with this rezoning to approve or deny. But staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval. The Planning Commission recommendation was on a five-to-one vote. We do believe that the PUD criteria has been met. This project meets the overarching objective of the Southdale Plan, which is to maximize pedestrian activity throughout the district with the public realm as the connective tissue that gives the district its unique identity and sets a stage for future development for those who work, live, and play in the greater Southdale District. Some of the key principles of the Southdale Design Guidelines are met here, again, dividing the site into smaller parcels, with the whole project based around that public realm. And as I mentioned, 45% of the site would be dedicated to the public. It would be maintained by the, the, the property owner, but the city does have, or residents do have access. Again, it meets our sustainable buildings policy. They're providing affordable housing. And in looking at some of those give-to-get criteria, again, 58 affordable housing units, the 45% for public space, significant increase in pedestrian connections, enhanced landscaping, and the ability to provide that future safe pedestrian and bike connection over or under France Avenue. So with that, as the mayor mentioned, we're recommending that you close the in-person public hearing, keep the public input open until June 9th, and continue action to June 18th. With that, I can stand for questions, and the development team is here to provide a little more detail to the.
All right, let's, let's first see if anyone in the council has a question for you as our Community Development Director, and then we'll go to the applicant presentation. Member Risher.
I have a question about the traffic study, and I'm looking at, I think it's page one, where it says the traffic impacts of the existing and anticipated site redevelopment were evaluated. And I'm wondering, when I went through the report, I didn't see any information that reflected the potential developments across the street in the Tiff District at 50, excuse me, 727250 France Avenue, nor did I see any evidence of what the Tiff District for the US Bank site might generate.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Ms. Fitzpatrick answer that question, but when they, there was an EAW. was an EAW done for the site, the surrounding projects were taken into account. And they also provide in a, a factor for future development. I believe it's up to 10 percent, an increase in the surrounding area. But I will ask Mallory to expand on that.
Can, Mallory, you're unmuted. Can you go ahead?
I can maybe offer a little feedback on that because I reviewed that question earlier today. So they did consider the developments in the area. We also consider future growth. They're looking at our traffic model. WSB has our entire city traffic model. And for this specific project, they used a yearly growth factor of 0.8 percent to look at those future forecasts. So they do have those projects considered within that growth factor for this study.
So that was in the, but was that in the actual traffic study? You're, you're saying that it was in a different report? It was in the?
No, it's page seven of this traffic study. It says background non-traffic growth, and they mentioned the developments, the existing conditions, and just regional traffic growth, and using a factor of 0.8 percent per year.
Okay, one of the possibilities for the parcel across the street is a hotel. That sounds like it's more of a convention-style hotel than a boutique. It's gonna, if it goes forward, we're talking a ballroom and all of that. And I just, I felt like, I just want to make sure that the possible peak traffic was addressed. Like different scenarios, and I, I did not see the word hotel.
Yep, sorry, Councilmember Rissler to interrupt, but that is not a project yet. If that project comes forward, they would have to update their traffic study for the hotel site, and they would have to consider this project with their analysis. So that we might have other discussions at that point around traffic with all the projects. But that one was, the hotel wasn't proposed at this point or approved.
Okay, um, thank you. And I, I do have, this would be our third TIF district in this area, correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, and I have to wonder, you know, I've been asking myself, and this would also be the very, very first time we would have a developer succeed with a project where they have followed the Southdale Design Guidelines, and they've put in a north-south access road and an east-west access road. True, we've never had anybody successfully complete a project. And, and those guidelines went into effect back in 2008. They were part of our comprehensive plan.
2019, the guidelines were, were adopted.
I believe they were part of the 2008 comprehensive plan as an appendix.
No, they were, that, that, that study started in 2015, and it took about three, four years.
Okay. One of my concerns with the way we approach this, and I, I looked at the material, we have 3.57 acres in the public realm. And maybe we can go to the image where you're showing the subdivisions. When you're calculating residential units per acre, you're taking the entire eight-acre number, true?
That is correct.
Okay, so when we're calculating units per acre, we're not subtracting the land that is becoming essentially non-buildable? Or, or not for, you know, because when, when I look at my house lot, I can't go halfway into the street to calculate what I can build. And I'm just wondering, because that's the approach we're taking when it comes to subdividing, will these divisions be compliant actually in terms of, you know, meeting the standards that one would assume would be applied? And that would be, you wouldn't calculate the road when you were looking at the area. You would only look at the buildable area.
That's correct. They're not plating a public street. So what you're looking at here, this is the total land area of the site. That north-south would be, there would be easements established over it that allows the public to use it, but it's at the maintenance of the property owner. If you looked at each lot individually, each lot would meet the comprehensive plan. The, the density of Lot 1 would be 69 units an acre. The density of Lot 2 with the two apartments, this would be 97 units an acre.
But would you be subtracting the amount of space the pathway occupied? You would not?
We would not. That's not dedicated.
Okay.
Because it's, they're just easements over that area.
Okay. I don't have any more questions at this point.
Thank you, Member Rissler. Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two questions for you. First is, I did not see a calculation of pervious surface before and after. Is that in your memo, or did I miss it?
I did not run that calculation.
Okay, so I'd be interested in seeing what that is. I know that we're working with watershed districts on, on runoff and everything and updating that, but I'd be interested in the pervious surface. The second question is, we got a memo from the Parks and Rec Department about the Centennial Lake, from the Centennial Lakes Director, and one of the questions she had was about the wind tunnel. When we're looking at this as a zoning question, is that something that could be a condition we put on, something to address the wind? Because we have a traffic study, we have a light, you know, we often ask for a shadow study, but I've never heard of a wind study before. But it sounds like maybe as we develop along the promenade, that's something we're gonna have to think about. Is there, A, a service that does a wind study? And B, is that something that can be addressed through zoning?
Yeah, but not that I'm aware of in terms of a wind study. I know the Bauer has caused some wind issues, and it's hard to keep some of the landscaping alive over there. So there is a concern with the Parks Department. It's something that if we can think of a specific condition to add to the project, we certainly can do that, but it would be fine-tuning that between preliminary and final to try to address that.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Do you happen to know the width of the promenade right away there? Is it 80 feet?
Oh, the promenade, it's.
Yeah, did any thought on that?
I can measure it quick and get back to you shortly.
Thank you. Okay. So I had, I don't think any of the rest of us have any questions. Let's go to the applicant and have them make their presentation.
It is 80 feet, Mayor. You're correct on the width of the promenade is 80 feet.
Okay. Good evening, gentlemen. Nice to see you all again. We saw you during Sketch Plan, and we welcome you back.
Thank you kindly. Glad to be here with you and the council this evening and the community again. On behalf of our entire team that's here, excited to.
Here's a little taller, just, you know, tip that microphone head up a little bit. There you go.
Talk a little bit louder also, sure. On behalf of our entire development team and design team, excited to be here again with you to continue what we think is a great conversation on what we think is a project that has a potential to be really great. So, can I grab the clicker real quick?
Yeah, so why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself and have the other folks introduce themselves as well, and give us your business address for the record.
Yep, so I'm, my name is Patrick Brahma. I'm with Enclave, so development team up on this slide. One of the developers on the project. My address is 166, 1660 South Highway 100, St. Louis Park.
Yeah, Terry Monarch with Confluence. We're 901 North Third Street, Minneapolis, and we're landscape architects on a project.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lucas Van Sistine with ESG Architecture and Design, and we're at 500 Washington Avenue South in Minneapolis.
So real quick, I'm planning to just give some quick background on the project. I'll touch on introductions to some of the other team members here, and then turn it over to the architect for a 3D fly-through of the project, which we think will be the exciting part of the presentation. So as I mentioned, I'm with Enclave. Partner developer on the project is Lifestyle Communities. They're here this evening as well. ESG is up at the podium, but a partner architect on the project is Pope Architects. They're working on the southwest site. Stan Tech is civil engineer, working on this project. And then Confluence Design is doing the landscaping design and public realm design for the project. Little bit of background, kind of how we got here, and I think Mr. Teague did a great job of going through this, so I won't go in detail. But just want to put a pin in this. We went through, I think, a really great public engagement process that's been about a year and a half long process with a lot of different touchpoints, with different stakeholders in the community. That feedback means a lot to us, and we take it to heart and are hopeful that as we go through this presentation, you can see some of the feedback we receive hopefully reflected in the plans. Our intent all along is to take feedback and try to reflect that in what we're proposing. So it's been a great process so far. It doesn't end, or hasn't ended yet. We're still continuing to engage with stakeholders as desired and obviously through this public process. So with that, I just wanted to highlight some, like, the really big takeaways that we had or pulled away from that public process and what we did to the project to attempt to respond to that. First, as Mr. Teague had mentioned, and I won't go into detail on this because he went through it, is we worked side-by-side with staff and the city to go through a, a public engagement process for a potential connection across France Avenue, a pedestrian connection. Really, the outcome of that process is our site was adjusted to accept a potential connection, whether it does happen or doesn't, whether it's now or it's in the future, whether it's below ground or above ground. So there are a handful of tweaks that were made to our site layout to accommodate that. Secondly, in the vein of the Southdale District Guidelines and a lot of the feedback that we've heard through interacting with the public, is, is, is public realm, public realm, public realm. A, a public tissue that runs from the promenade to France, connect France to the promenade, make the site not feel like a private exclusive development for private benefit only, make it feel like an area the public can feel welcome to walk through, make it multimodal, make pedestrian first. And so the red area shown here is an example of that area that is intentionally programmed. Depending on the calculation, there was some discussion of it here, just even in the original presentation, there's different ways to calculate that. Could be in the high 30s, could be about 50 percent depending on how you calculate and define what public realm is. But we just want to identify that that's part of the intention of our site plan is to respond to providing public realm. A specific component of that, that I wanted to mention, and we'll touch in detail in the 3D presentation, is the east-to-west plaza area. I don't have a great term for that. I don't want to call it the promenade east-to-west because then it gets confusing, but that center to east-to-west plaza that runs through the center of our site, reflecting on what we originally presented about a year and a half ago compared to what you see now previously, you would have seen a lot of impervious surface. The layout of the buildings created unintentionally kind of a slight canyon effect of massing against that promenade, or that, excuse me, east-to-west connection. There was less green. The design was more linear and rectangular. The east side between the two east buildings previously had a parking ramp running below ground connecting the two buildings. That southeast building previously was facing southward. The U shape was facing south. So what we did, and the intention here, was to kind of flip a lot of that, to make it not feel linear, to reduce the amount of impervious surface, to add green, to allow for tree planting, to make it look and feel like an extension of the promenade versus a private plaza, to allow that area between the two east buildings to get sunlight, to allow for proper tree growth, and with the depth of soils to allow real tree establishment. And then additionally, to focus the intention of design, especially on the first two floors of this project, to interact and connect well with that center east-to-west plaza. So there's a lot of, as the architect and design team fly through the site, you'll see a lot of kind of the front doors on this project, a lot of pedestrian-level connections, whether it's restaurants, commercials, lobby areas, residential walkout spaces, amenities that interact with that center east-to-west plaza. And then further on the public realm side of things, and Mr. Teague identified kind of this expansion of the promenade into our sites. For frame of reference, the property to the south, Pin stripes, has a zero-to-five-foot setback from the promenade. 71 France just north of us has a 15-to-20-foot setback from the promenade. I believe the Bauer was about 20 to 25 feet. We're at 35-plus in some areas, trying to respond to the desire from the community to get the buildings further out the promenade and expand that area. Same comment here is the center east-to-west plaza. Intention of the design to not be linear and look like a big impervious area that feels like a private space, to make it not rectangular, to make it more curvy, natural feeling like an expansion of the, of the promenade area. So the design is as such and will be discussed in, in the presentation. We did add a restaurant on the east side of this on the promenade that was not there originally, and that was added in, in response to requests received. And then lastly, the design team will go into detail, but the northeast side of the site does have a public amenity available for the public to use as they're going through the promenade. Some people use the terminology as a room for the promenade area. And then art was mentioned. We did add art in four different locations. Those are highlighted in those red dots. South side of the south buildings, we did receive requests to incorporate green walls wherever we could on the project. We felt that the south side of the south building for sunlight, sunlight reasons was the most logical area to place those and also be successful with the establishment of those green walls. And then, a little bit hard to describe on the site plan, but in general, we did hear comment about parking and having too much parking on this site and making sure that we can convert parking in the future if it is identified that we're overparked. I can go into a little bit more detail, and it's included in our narrative, but we, we did make some intentional changes to the project design to account for that. And then we had a great meeting with the planning commission just recently. I did want to note for the sake of trying to, like, at least from the developer side of things, identify, we heard some comments, and we're gonna try to respond to them. One, labeled one on the map here, the pedestrian crossway over that north-to-south road, we're gonna add some, we're gonna make some enhancements to that for pedestrian safety and placemaking. The design team will talk through that when they do their fly-through. The parking, that's parallel parking along the west side of that north-to-south road. Unintentionally, through our original submittal, we didn't really identify the programming there, or make a distinction of how that would be used or what it would look like. But our intention is to add more programming, maybe change the color of the pavement, make it clear that it's not just straight-up parking for vehicles, that it's for a lot of other important uses to allow development like this to function successfully. And really, based on at least some select comments from planning commission members, avoid a situation where like a resident in one of the apartment buildings just hogs one of those stalls, and it kind of goes against the intent of, of the stall being there for multipurpose use. Number three was covered in Carrie's comments. And then number four, there's just some architectural detail that wasn't included in our original submittal that we'll just highlight tonight on the southeast side of the southeast building. So that's the highlight of kind of the big things that, as you're going through the architect's presentation, I just wanted to highlight, we intentionally are trying to make a connection to some of the feedback that we received. So turn it over to the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brahma.
Okay, as much as we love a good site plan, we'd like to jump to the 3D model so we can fly around and get a, get a sense of the, the spaces, the height, the materiality, all of that. I can, I can, I'll start here and talk more about massing and the material and kind of the architectural partie. You can see we're looking along France through the center where the promenade is being pulled through all the way to France. And you can see in the, the, the materiality and the identity of the architecture here is a little more commercial feeling. As we move through to the east, it'll start to feel a little more residential. And part of the things that are doing that is a, a high transparency. So, you know, you're looking at, for example, on the left building, that's probably 90 percent transparency. And then as we move through the, where it's a residential unit, it could be 45 percent transparency. So you'll see that difference as we move through. You'll also see in terms of materials, on this facade, the idea is that there's a, a bigger mass of one material. So on the, for example, on the building on the left, that would be, that white material's a cast stone that goes all the way up. And then next to that is a brick that goes all the way up. As we move through the site, you'll see that those materials, that cast stone, generally then will stay at the base, and we have more of a tri- then will stay at the base and we have more of a tripartite approach when we get through to the more residential feeling part of the site. So those are some things to, to notice as we, as we fly through as it pertains to the architecture. Terry, if there's anything else you want to mention on this slide?
That's good, I'll come around to it. As we come around the building, you can zoom in. So keeping with the area guidelines and the premise of this development, this, this whole development's organized around the human activity in the public realm. The walkability of the community, the access to local regional trails, the connectivity to the, to the relationships of the buildings around it and the services around it are all kind of focused on the public. There's an intentionality of not identifying the cars being dominant, but the, the pedestrian is being dominant, so there's a very heavy investment at the public realm. This, this begins to illustrate some of that connection to France Avenue, there's that strong buffer that allows the ability for connect, for the connection of the underpass or future overpass of France Avenue, along France Avenue. It's a little wider than most of the developments on France, but that allows for that to happen in the future because of the extensive grade change that could possibly occur with an underpass, but it also gives us a short-term ability to actually create a larger landscape buffer, taking away some of that, you know, elephant in the room, the size of France Avenue and its unwalkability and its unfriendliness to humans. This kind of begins to soften that and create that buffered edge between the development and, and the busy street. You can see here the beginning of the, the internal kind of pedestrian connection here. As Patrick said, we don't want to call it another promenade, but that connection towards the promenade, it's like this green spine of fingers we have in this site that begins to reach through the development and begin those connections to those surrounding amenities, promenade, Centennial Lakes, and the entire community. Something about this development that's different is, you know, this follows area guidelines to full extents, I think, in my opinion. And you'll see that throughout, but it, reason it looks different is because it's never been done before, right? We're kind of meeting all the goals that we've met before, so it'll look a lot different than it's looked before. The density's going to feel heavier, it's going to feel like there's no room for cars, there's no room for parking, but that's because it is primarily focused on landscape and pedestrians. So here you can begin to see the space we're identifying. Patrick talked about the opportunities for uses on both buildings on the front here, there'll be prime restaurants. The buildings will actually wrap on both sides so that from all corners, you begin to be able to see that connection to activity on the corners, both in the interior space from the south and from the north. Those restaurants wrap the corners, come into the development space and have this opportunity to interact with an open lawn area, kind of creating one of these nodes of opportunity for, for kind of exemplified or exaggerated landscape where people can connect, gather, celebrate events, there could be small movies here, it could be concerts, could be, you know, community bags events, those sorts of things. You can see how the tenant of the office building to the, to the north relates to the lawn area. You can see how the interaction of the building steps back so the upper private spaces can interact with the public spaces as well, kind of giving more of a feeling of connectivity as well. And then you can move to the next slide. And then as we move deeper in, you kind of begin that sense of feel of that terracing happening, so it doesn't feel like you're in a walled cavern as Patrick was mentioning. Intentionally, the landscape here is not overstructured, so it allows us the ability to provide larger trees and more in-depth landscaping, more of that kind of public space. The furnishings, the materiality begins to change as well and it begins to identify more of that pedestrian scale and feel. Some of the building spaces in the middle of the building to the northwest, potentially a community room that could spill out, maybe a WeWork type situation where that could spill out into the, into the landscape and engage the neighborhood as well, but you really get the strong sense of this being more public than it is private. Next slide.
Can I, can I ask a question? So the, when we, we look at some of the, these kind of virtual views, I think, they look wonderful, and it looks great, right? My question is, how can we get a sense of what it will feel like if you're, you know, sitting, listening to a concert between those two buildings? How, how does that give us, how can we get a sense of what that might?
I can give you a great example. You might have to go online if you're not going to travel there, but in, in Georgia, there's a place called Alpharetta, it's a pretty popular development. There's a place called Avalon that is a very similar condition to this, it has like a main street development that actually has public realm in the middle of the street for the north-south traffic, and then they'll have a centralized green space that is surrounded by commercial retail on the lowest level and then five, six, seven story residential adjacent to it with a backdrop of a movie theater, kind of entertainment facility with a water fountain and that sort of stuff. But it's, it's a similar relationship to this, they actually have a welcome building and they have bags on Wednesday night and they have lawn bowling on another night and they have movies on another night. So this is kind of that similar space relationship, it's very similar, it might be slightly wider, but it's kind of a similar type of feel to this. This is a little more intimate than that, that's a little larger scale, but...
And what, what's the name again?
Avalon in Alpharetta.
Avalon, okay.
And I can send you a link too.
Perfect, thank you.
Could you go back one slide, please? So you got the view from France Avenue? So...
Keep going.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's good. No, go back where you were, I think it's easier to ask this question when you've got this orientation. So when we think about the pedestrian experience, which I know you've tried to embrace from the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines, we talk about making sure that that first 60 feet makes one feel like you don't have the building hanging over your head. Well, you've done a good job of that on the left-hand side of this as you go and move down through with that podium-style height, but on the right-hand side, it's a, just a, to me, it's just like a sheer wall until you get up, and I don't know what the height of that is before it, it switches over to apartments behind the office, I'm assuming that's what we're looking at here. But it looks to me like it's, might be 60, 80, 80 feet tall, and so I'm walking in the, on the, on the south side there in the shade where that one person is, and I got this, this sheer wall above me here, and just from looking at this, it makes me feel like, well, I don't want to be on that side. I don't want to be in that, that spot where I got the building feeling like it's hanging over me. I want to be on the other side of this, this so-called street, I'll call it that, a street, passageway. And am I right that we're talking 60 feet here, we're, we're, because it looks, it looks wide when you look at it, but if I got my dimensions correct off what Director Teague presented, we're talking about a space that's 20 yards wide. Is that right?
Yep.
60 feet, 20 yards?
I can do that calculation, yeah, yeah, yes.
60 feet, except where it bumps out, like you said, to the north side.
So, and the promenade is about 30 yards wide. That's why I asked that question earlier about spatial relationship to the, to the promenade, because that's something I've got in my head, as to, as to, as to a space that works well for pedestrian movements that has, even when you get up by 71 France, Lunds Byerlys, you, you still have a sense that it's, it's okay, it feels comfortable, you can breathe, there's, there's a lot of freedom in the, in the, in the air, so to speak. I, I get a little bit nervous here when I watch you going on the virtual down the north side of that south building, southwest building.
Sure. Now, I totally understand that, and I think that there's two different landscapes that you're kind of dealing with there. One is more of a public park, right? That the density isn't the same within a public space. This is the internal development to the core following the guidelines with setbacks that have been set in the guidelines. The north side is a little softer in what that appeals. The south side still meets the guidelines to where their setbacks are established, but it is more of an abrupt wall. What we've tried to do to soften that is there's a lot of transparency on that wall, we've done some planting in front of it as well to begin to take away that kind of pedestrian scale, feeling of monumentality there. There's also going to be where it says mural, there's going to be a piece of art along that wall that'll engage people as well, so that'll help them...
That's a nice feature.
Yeah, so we don't know what it is, so we didn't want to put something up there and go, "I don't like that, that's not my style of art." So it's just going to be a mural, and then above it is there's, you know, it's very transparent, and that is part of actually the parking structure. So, you know, with the parking structure for the office space on that, they, they need a lot more above ground than the other building does, so that begins to accommodate some of that, and then the office space as part of it above it. So we're trying to soften that edge, we're opening it up. I think in the corner with the restaurant, it really begins to do it, there is this section in the middle, and I think by expanding to the north, we begin to open up that feeling. Also, the difference between kind of the promenade and this is this is more of a pedestrian feel. We do accommodate bikes, we allow bikes to come into the development, but like any kind of public walkable space, we encourage people more to walk their bikes through here than to ride them, with that access being France to Gallagher to the promenade to get to the more high-speed traffic. We'll continue through this and we can kind of talk about it a little bit more in the next slide.
Yeah, so I think we're all appreciative of the fact that, if my data, my notes are right here, 45% of the land is dedicated to public use, but it, it strikes me that you're on France Avenue between France and York, and that's where we, we've said, that's okay to have a little height there, you know? And you, you've got an 18-story building within a couple blocks, and so I'm wondering, when you go taller, skinnier, you get more green space rather than shortened squat, you know? And so I, to me, I'd rather have you open this up a little bit so that there was more breathing room and go higher than... Yeah, everybody's got an opinion.
Kind of like art, yeah. So, no, I get it, I totally, and that, that's, that's a valid comment, that's fine.
Could you back up so that we're a little earlier and we can see the access off of France?
Two.
Okay, a little more. Okay, okay. A couple of concerns. Where is the ADA access? You've got these stairs here.
So the ADA access comes from the north side and the south side as they, as they lead in through the restaurants. Like in, in the face of the buildings, that's where we have our ADA access. And directly off the street, we, so two things here, we didn't, we didn't do a direct ramp here, we could, but that is also within that setback area for the future connector, and eventually if this goes below grade, that whole front terracing goes away. The art piece will remain, but the terracing goes away and we drop down 20-plus feet below France Avenue to do the underpass, if that underpass happens.
So if I'm walking or I'm going down France...
You'd, you'd come to an ADA access from the south prior to getting to the middle, or you'd come to an ADA access from the north prior to getting to the middle?
Okay, the other...
Those restaurants have ADA access on both sides.
Right, it's, it's disappointing that the grand entrance off of France is not ADA accessible.
Yeah, that's something we can look at.
The other, and I was walking the site yesterday, and where your boulevard ends, that is where the turn lane is created, and it makes me nervous that you're bringing the sidewalk right up to the curb and you're getting rid of that boulevard, because I think that buffer is really rather important. I hear what Mayor Hovland is saying about height, but I think part of the problem is we've got this model where you have to turn things of interest into the center of the development, and I think what ends up happening is the buildings are almost, you know, showing their backs to France, to the promenade. You're, you're making concessions, but the experience of walking down France, I think, is kind of disappointing. And when I think about Lunds Byerlys, and I was trying to imagine with the site that I was looking at, how close the walls of the building were going to be compared to where the ramp going up to Lunds Byerlys is, and it's really kind of nice the way you go up a ramp and you're pulled back from the street and you're elevated above it as you take that pathway. There's a lot going on here, but the connector, and I have to say, putting the connector right there, you know, and I think I might be the only one who is concerned by, you know, shifting the promenade further to the north or whatever, or, you know, extending it instead of going where the bike path is and where you, you could have a natural progression from the promenade where you're not entering into a private space, and even though you're saying this is a public, there's going to be public easements, we'll view it as public, but it, it is within a private development, it's not between, so those, those are things I'm thinking about.
Go ahead and we'll, keep going, we'll, we'll...
That'd be great.
Well, maybe I'll figure out a way to ask my question a different way so I don't remote get such a response.
And I think I can, I think I can answer a bunch of questions that have been brought up as well, too.
Yeah.
So, you know, a lot of the connection here between buildings follows the guidelines to break up the 200 by 200-foot block, that's why it's through the center of the development, that's why it is pedestrian. We also do have a separate 50-foot plus easement on the south side to accommodate the future underpass connection, which does increase public realm to the south that could be in the middle of the site if that wasn't required, but it is required as part of this development by the city. So that's kind of adds to that. What we're truly, we're truly trying to emphasize in this image is that pedestrian connection and that pedestrian movement through the site, that is the north-south road, as we know, is for temporary apartment, temporary, you know, drop-off, pickup, that sort of stuff, and this really emphasizes that by a raised platform, ballast to protect, to protect the public. You can see the differentiation in pavement and the attention to detail with, you know, public seating and waiting areas for pickup and drop-off, but also how that begins to open up on this bottom end, too. Go to the next slide. You'll see where that wall was a concern before, how that begins to open up in the corner. There's a distinctive jog in this central pedestrian realm, and that is to accommodate that connection to the underpass, but, or overpass, but also it is to intentionally kind of break up the space so it doesn't feel so long and linear. We think that'll also help with wind reduction. We think it'll begin to break it up with the massings of buildings, these buildings aren't anywhere close to the height of the bower, and the setback from the promenade, or from the promenade is a lot greater than as well. So you begin to see this pedestrian connection, this relationship to the corner of the buildings, more art, more public art. Also, that community room is in the middle, there's a residence kind of lobby here that'll activate the street as well on the corner of the northwest building. Next slide.
How wide is that street, Mr. Menard?
This is a 60-foot right-of-way.
60-foot right-of-way, but the width of the street itself?
I'm going to say it's like 36 with parking.
Yeah, with the parking.
Yeah, and 24 without the parking.
Okay.
So it's a standard city street. You can, you can see the crosswalk here.
One of the challenges you guys have here, it seems to me, is it's like a grand version of what we faced over there with Think Bank on the promenade, you, you've really got the challenge of trying to have four front doors.
Yep.
Every where, every side you go to, you got to think about it as almost like a front door, and so you got to make it look good from every conceivable direction, and that's, that's, that's tricky work, that's not easy to do.
There's always a backside, you'll see that.
Just a comment.
Well, and then, we'll, we'll, you'll see as we progress through this how, you know, the, the, the talk about putting all our bank for a buck along France Avenue, you'll see how the south side, these buildings do open up on every side to be part of public realm. So here you can see to the south, we emphasize, emphasize the pedestrian, to the north, we emphasize the quick drop-off, short-term parking. You can see the transparency to the first level of the buildings and how that begins to connect in. Go to the next slide. And then as we begin to move into this next jog in, into the promenade, you can see that openness that begins to happen. Next slide.
What's the material that you're showing us there, that light-colored material?
So it'll be a combination of both, probably some concrete, some paving, some colored concrete, you know, we're trying to diversify that. So one of the things here that you kind of see here is the width of this, and the reason there's a lot of paving here, plus as we entered into the, the west direction, was we require fire truck access. So the original fire truck access drawing was a straight line with a hammerhead, and it didn't look very pretty, so we softened that up by making this curved road that can accommodate the turning radiuses of the fire truck, they want us to soften it even more, but I think that it's, the possibility of the fire truck going through here doesn't feel like it, that's what it's designed for. It's designed for people, it's designed for movement, it's designed for gathering. So with this, we've kind of varied the texture of the paving, so there is a, a right-of-way width that's required, but it looks narrower and feels narrower because of the different textures and paving that we use through here, plus the areas for seating and gathering and the interconnection. Next slide. So here's a little deeper in, you can begin to see the relationship to the walkouts as related to the public space and the private space. The elevation of the private space helps to create that separation, but still make it feel as one. The reason that there's no need for a lot of private space here is because we do accommodate that on the amenity deck, so we do have a lot of private space within the amenity spaces above, so that allows us to create more public space here as well. Go to the next slide. And then this kind of pulls us up so you can begin to see that interconnection. I know in our previous meeting you reversed, referred to the buildings as the dueling seas. There's a reason for that, because it allows light to penetrate into the corridor here that allows us to grow plants and landscape. It also provides more light, more of an intimate relationship, it almost has a brownstone walk-up type feel with purely residential, although it can accommodate emergency vehicles. And then we begin to break that up with the height and the... And then we begin to break that up with the height and the density of the larger building, and that really begins to open up this part of the site. Next slide.
Is it intended that these walk-ups are all rental?
Yeah.
Okay. The condominiums are in the southwest building?
Yes.
Yes.
Only.
Right, yeah, you can see in the background here, the taller building.
So here you can begin to see the relationship to the private amenity space and then the public space with still some private adjacent to it, but it really has more of a stronger public feel pulling you from the promenade, as you'll see in the next few slides. But also that inner relationship of the spaces and then the distinctive jog that we have or the purposeful jog we have on the western development, so that it's not this long shot or straight line. You have this interest of the focal point of the art, and then you turn the corner, but it's still all are connected as like a finger that pulls away from the promenade. And then this shows that strong relationship to the south. And I think, you know, we talked about the emphasis we put on the north and the center spines and everywhere, but I think this connection to the promenade is something we put extra emphasis in because we felt it was really important and we understand the relationship of the promenade to the entire district and area and that walkability and how that connectivity happens. It happens here through a public space through the middle. It'll happen through the southern side, and it also happens on the north side of our development. So there's these fingers of movement that can happen throughout the site. Now, what we did here, too, though, is we actually went beyond our property line, and we've talked to the city about this and the park board about this. And then the developer's willing to maintain all this property as part of an agreement. But we really think it kind of feels seamless if we do pull up right to that property line with our design and how we're interacting. You can see the hammerhead cleverly hidden in here. You can see the restaurant that'll activate the promenade, cause a lot of activity, more eyes in the street, more safety, a really strong sense of public here versus private with that restaurant, which I think helps pull people through the development as well. We also provide elements like there's Centennial Lakes with regards to the swings and the seating, kind of tying this whole promenade together. Next slide. You can see the walkouts here, how they still have a private feel, but they are connected to the public space as well. And then we talk about this outdoor room and through public engagement, through discussions, we talked about open space, we talked about art, we talked about playground. But the dog park seemed to resonate with a lot of people, whether it's just for the development or for the public as well, because there was some worry about it being public. But if it is a, we think it's a great opportunity. One of the concerns was the demand would be high, and if that's a problem, then I think we're checking the box, because if the demand is high, then that's something that's needed in the area. So we just think that'll help activate everything in the promenade and connect to the community. It's something to give back to the surrounding developments as well if they don't have that space. Next slide.
So one of our residents suggested to us that because you're on the promenade, that's a natural place to walk your dog. And because you're putting affordable units in the building project, potentially, if it's approved, that you can expect that there'll be kids here and you'd be better off with a small park. Have you thought that?
Yes, we have.
Yes.
And we've talked about it with the amenity space for the specific residents to have a children's play area. So then we can accommodate both of the features and still accommodate the residents living in the building to have that amenity space. So.
Okay.
So this is just kind of another view where you can kind of see it's not your average dog park. It's pretty high-end, artificial turf, beautiful seating, covered canopy, you know, really nice amenities elements, waste bins, dog bags, all that stuff. So I think it would be very well received. Next slide. Oh, yeah, irrigation, yes. Yeah, smell, irrigation, yes, all of our dog parks fully irrigated. Next slide.
Can we go back to the dog park? I think what I'm hearing, and I believe in the Park and Rec memo, there was a please don't put the dog park right by the promenade. And, you know, I have dogs. I think about walking my dogs. I don't walk on the promenade, but, you know, you're walking your dog and suddenly you go near a dog park. And what that might, you know, the ruckus that could erupt, especially from one of my dogs, is something that people are thinking about as well. I've heard somebody say the smell. It just seems one of the consistent things I'm hearing from people, including people who are very much supportive of your project, is do not put the dog park by the promenade.
Yeah, it's great. And I think the park board, to clarify, they were worried about the busyness of it because it would be so well-used that it might cause log jams on the promenade when people are walking by, you know, that sort of stuff. Although this is the pedestrian side, not the bike side, so, but that is understandable. And then here you get the view more to the south, connecting to Centennial Lakes and the main link. You see that connection of those public spaces. We provided some open lawns, some areas for gathering, some denser planting to separate kind of that off-the-promenade use from the on-the-promenade use, so there's a little more privacy, so we don't have direct connections as many places. We were talking with the park board also about maybe reducing the connections so that there's less opportunities for people in kind of interacting. But again, this is the pedestrian side of the promenade, not the bike side. Next slide. And then here's the view at the corner when you come out of Centennial Lakes, kind of that main intersection, the Nine Mile Creek Trail. That trail was talked about being widened. That was at the request of Three Rivers, but also the fire department for access here. We can get away with not maybe paving the whole thing and using some other type of product like net lawn or grass pave or something to keep it more green. We're looking at creating a good buffer between residential and the trail. You can see the connection to some of those open spaces and the restaurant as well, and then the center of the promenade. Next.
We have reworked this corner since meeting with planning commission, kind of tiering it and stepping it back a little more at the corner here.
Kind of that view back towards the promenade. The one thing that thinks great about this project is it provides two really powerful connections to the promenade, but it also provides another subtle one to the north. But nowhere along France is there that direct visibility to the promenade where you feel like you're invited. Even the main connection to the pavilion at Centennial Lakes kind of feels like it's part of a parking lot and you're not really entering a space. We think the opportunity here for public park sign of some, whether it's a promenade or not, could make this strong connection. You see this larger kind of concrete space. The easement for Pinstripes kind of service area requires that to stay. We're trying to make it not look like Poteminas and something more public. The only time that'd ever be driven on is by those service vehicles. We're not intending it as a circulation way through here. You can begin to see the entries to the main street and how that feels in the connectivity. And then next slide, I'll kind of back up a little bit. And then for the main southwest building, a lot of open park space there as well. This is part of that connection from France Avenue where you can see where the underpass or overpass might happen, kind of that wrapping around the corner, connection to the Nine Mile Creek Trail, that softness, the restaurant, and just providing some of those public elements along this facade as well to begin to soften that edge and create more of that public realm. This is one of the reasons why our center space is only 60 feet, because we could probably widen that if we didn't have to accommodate for that 50 here, but that was a real strong desire to make that connection for that circulation. So we wanted to provide that. And then here again at the corner, I don't know if you want to talk about the architecture here, but this is kind of that shot from Gallagher showing that connection. You can really see the strong connection with the Nine Mile Creek Trail, how it connects to the promenade, the accessibility. We haven't changed any of the kind of intersection details. The access to the Pinstripes development remains exactly the same as it is today. The only thing we've taken away is that temporary parking that people have been using on the Macy's lot and put a development there. But a lot of this is, you know, kind of the landscape here along this side of France. We've done a lot of projects in the area in Edina here along France, and I think this is one of the most well-landscaped and pedestrian-defined environments. You know, the 7200 and 7250 is a very nice place as well, as was 7001. But I think this one kind of steps it up even a further notch of being very grand and very welcoming to the public. And kind of that shot from the north side, this is what you said, maybe you're not so glamorous side, but we do have some short-term parking, some drop-off parking, and this accommodates the restaurants within the building. It's Minnesota. People like to see that there's parking. They feel comfortable with that. It's part of what we've been asked to provide by the developers of those types of facilities, and that will really begin to attract the vendors to those sites. There's still a strong pedestrian connection down to the south. Next slide. And then connects through the development. You can see the strong, you know, model of the street with the pedestrian to the south and vehicular temporary drop-off. And then there's another art moment there, kind of connecting to that pedestrian circulation. We still have to provide for fire on this side as well, so that does require a little bit more paving. And then next slide. And then this takes us around back to the corner again, where you kind of see the corner of the promenade, and then next slide. And then kind of the overall shot where you can see the meandering of the promenade. The promenade almost gets blurred. You can't even really see where it is, but it's that bottom path and how we bleed that into the site, wind and meander past some of the public art in the buildings and connect to the north. And then that same feeling happens along the south side to a little bit more kind of toned-down detail as primarily the, you know, more bike and commuter-type traffic on the Nine Mile Creek Trail. And then last slide. And then just kind of the overall shot of the development again from France Avenue. So I think that's it.
Amber Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a couple of questions. I'm looking at this, this is a great slide to look at. When people are walking on France, I envision this sidewalk as being pedestrian traffic as in transportation, not meandering and going to the park. So I'm worried about the curve to the sidewalk, and I'm also worried about the lack of buffer. If you've ever walked down France, and I'm sure you have worked on this a lot, it's a very loud street.
Yep.
So if you're walking along, if you're going to the grocery store from someplace south of there, this should be a direct line. I want to get to the grocery store. I want to get home. I don't want to lose my hearing. I don't want to get hit by a car, you know, things like that. So it's a minor point, but I want this to be...
It's an easy fix.
Yeah.
I think what you're saying is it'd be nice to have that commuter road and then a secondary pedestrian road that provides that access.
Just some way so that if I, yeah, if I'm walking, I feel safe and I can get to my destination. So this integrates with the rest of it.
Sounds great.
And then the other questions I have, I, oh, when you're looking at the amenity spaces, will the two residential buildings have access to each other's amenity spaces?
Yes.
Okay. So if one is the pool and the other one's the playground, everyone can go to the playground.
Pool's on the north side, so we get that sun from the south. And then on the south side is a little more shadier, so that'll have other amenities.
Okay, thank you. And then let me think. With the EV charging, is it, how is, just generally, when you're building a building in 2024, do you wire it for a time when they will be 100% EV? Or is that something that would have to be added in later?
And you're asking a landscape architect.
Oh, you're the landscape architect. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. We'll get to the architect then.
Christopher, do you want to come up, too?
I'm Christopher Willett with ESG Architecture and Design, colleague of Lucas's 500 Washington Avenue South in Minneapolis. The short answer is we are providing an amount of conduit to handle future EV chargers above the base initial build-out of them. Anything beyond that in the future can be wired. Just then the whole electric design and transformer design, it kind of, it grows in terms of the overall adjustment of power that's necessary for the site. But you could also see the flip side as solar becomes more prominent and, you know, vehicles go more to electric. Those two things kind of start to balance each other out over time as well.
But in 2024, we're equipped for in 2050, when we're 100% electric vehicles, this will still be a relevant building, is my question.
Correct. You could still come in and convert.
Okay.
The building. There'd be additional work beyond what is currently here.
But it won't be like, oh, we have to tear everything out on this first floor to accommodate... Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm just going to go with the questions for now, and then I assume we'll come back for more general thoughts at some point. But my one, my first question is around the restaurant. So first, thank you for including a couple more of those activation components. For the restaurant, well, actually, this is general for any of them. Can you highlight a little bit more where you're thinking about like patio seating and how that will be separate yet integrated with any of the like general park open seating?
Yeah, so it's different on both sides. So each of the buildings on the west side have restaurants in the basis of them or some form of commercial retail. And you can kind of see the outdoor patios are where the umbrellas are. So they do go along the front and the corners of the building, but also wrap interior to the central public space. So there's an inner relationship there to activities that could be happening within that space, but also intimacy of the restaurant if you don't want to sit in a public space like that. So that's how it works in the front side.
So here, sorry, if we can go back quick.
Yep.
I was not quick enough on the draw. Apologize for that. Is it really the coloring then of the flooring that I'm looking at? So those three and then the four on the right-hand side would be part of the restaurant? And then that's on the inside?
Yeah, that suggests space, right, in the way we're defining it. It doesn't mean it couldn't spill out into other areas, but the front of the building would have, you can kind of see that where the elevated area here is without umbrellas. I don't know if you want to kind of point to that area. So there's this area along the front of the building that's outdoor dining space, but then also on the inside. We've just kind of highlighted those small intimate areas because that exists also on the south side of the southwest building, but then it could also extend into this space as well. So depending on demand, it's kind of flexible.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the other one in the, on the back, we have a raised patio there that's specifically disengaged from the promenade kind of physically. You see there's an ADA ramp. There's also steps that get you up to the space, but it slightly elevates you above the promenade, but still provides for that connectivity for people to sit out and sit in chairs and gather within the kind of circulation route that's a part of the space. But the immediate outdoor seating is right adjacent to the restaurant.
Thank you. And then now that we're on this side anyway, so as I understand it, these two buildings on the east side are the rental-based units. So are those amenities shared? I noticed one pool. Can people go?
Yes. Yeah, I think somebody asked that earlier.
Okay. Sorry for that. And then, did you explore any alternative housing types within this? And where I'm kind of going with this is, this is a lot of housing within one area, and so I'm thinking really about diversity of housing. And I know that they're not as prevalent right now, but you have some of these like more communal kind of shared housing options where there might be like a joint kitchen and then like six or eight kind of bunk rooms off of that. Like, did you explore any of those kinds of things here, or is it just fairly typical kinds of housing?
Not that one specifically. I don't know, Ben or Patrick, if you want to. The condo building is definitely unique from what I'm used to, just standard apartment. But Patrick, go ahead.
Yeah, the, yeah, the answer to your specific question answers, no. But just for the record, there's studios, the three bedrooms, so all those different unit types, different sizes, all the way up from penthouse down to ground floor town homes to just walkout units. We have for sale and rentable, so, and affordable units as well. So not yes to your direct question, but I think there's a handful of, at least from our perspective, a handful of different housing options on the site.
Thank you. And then another very, I think, direct question is, have you explored at least on the spaces that are roads throughout the site where there is parking, whether or not that could be like paid parking option to really help throttle? I think one of the comments was you don't have a resident just parking their vehicle there at all times. Is that being considered for an option to help with the management of parking?
I think that could be. I think it'd have to be a discussion with the city to be able to put meters there and kind of organize it that way. The guidelines specifically say short-term parking in any way or form that's meant for drop-off, pickup, delivery, that sort of stuff. So I think if there's some way we can identify that that's what it is, I think that would help that and encourage that, like, you know, minimum, you know, 20, 30-minute parking or something like that.
Okay, thank you. And so one of the questions, when I was initially looking at this, kind of before you went through your whole presentation, was like, what's the big idea? your whole presentation was like, what's the big idea? And I think when we had talked previously, you know, I said something that's going to be that, that community draw and throughout, of course, like a venue or something like that, a comedy club. And, and so I, in one way, you know, I do appreciate the inclusion of restaurants. I think that that is going to bring people there, but there's only so much that people can eat. The one thing that I did feel like started to hint at this was, and this came at the way end, right? The, like, here is the park and bringing the, the green in it to the signage. I think that that was that like visual wow factor that I was looking for. But is there anything else that you would kind of highlight as like, here's the big idea and this is why this really is, you know, the right thing for this? I would say, I know that there's three sites in this general area right now, right? But these are generational opportunities that we see within the community of Edina. And so it's really important for, I know all of us, all of us here, to make sure that what we're putting here is, is really monumental important. So with that, what's the big idea?
Do you see the image that's up now?
I do.
That's your big green, here's the park sign. And I think Patrick's still waiting for you to bring the comedy club development to the developments.
I got jokes ready. Great question, yeah. So obviously, wow moments, what's an amenity, what's a public benefit? As we go through this process, as you well know, everybody has a different perspective. And what I think is an awesome thing, you know, I kind of get different feedbacks. So I'm going to try to just identify a few things that may or may not land based on your, you know, on someone's position. So I mean, the 45% of public space is one item. The, the restaurant spaces, whether it's to the west side of the site or the east side that you mentioned, this landmark piece, there's four pieces of art that we added into the project. We do have, and I don't know if you guys can go to it, but we're expecting to have like a rental conference area. We haven't like programmed it completely, but there's a notch in that northwest building that expands the promenade greater than 60 feet. And in that area, there's a area we were anticipating to be allowed to be used by the public or rented by the public, like a little mini conference room or conference center or cowork area. So we have that as well. You were joking, but in all seriousness, we heard the comment about specialized users. So rather than just going to the typical run-of-the-mill prospects for this project, can we get a creative type of use, creative type of retail, creative specialized type of restaurant user experience type user, comedy club, entertainment? Because we're so far out, I, we talked about this previously, I, it's a little bit of speculation, but we have engaged our leasing team, JLL. We've identified that request and desire and they, you know, they kind of have the same response. We can't guarantee what we can bring you back, but there are very few sites that we can feel strong about and push, and this is a unique site that where we think we could get unique leasing activity from a unique user. So we hope that we have luck in that direction and we come back to you with some sort of amended PUD to change a facade for some awesome user that could add a spark to the development as well. Am I missing anything?
On the heels of that too, Patrick, just in the way we're setting up retail and restaurant opportunities, the space outside of those is more than just little patios, right? There's to the south, we've got a big expressive space that opens up to this axis that leads to the promenade. On the east side, you saw the tiered seating opportunities. So that all leads into these opportunities that Patrick's alluding to for potential, whether it's leases or, you know, purchasers of that space to really get creative with what they can do with it. We're trying to set that, we're trying to set the framework for something unique to come in, even though we don't necessarily have the control in this moment to pick what that is.
And I do think, you know, if we're talking big destination draw from a landscape point of view, that's Centennial Lakes. We're not going to compete with that, right? And every other development around here has used Centennial Lakes as their green space. And, you know, this, we're creating something more of that. We're creating connections to it, fingers to it, that do provide these spots and opportunities for smaller activation and events and opportunities for not only the public, but the residents that live here. But we are connecting to the promenade and we are connecting to Centennial Lakes because that is the draw.
Given that this, and I keep it on the screen, given that this is such a focal point of the connector area, what will be the impact if there is an over, over underpass here?
Well, we hope, so the way this is set up right now, we hope to still have a pretty direct connection to that underpass. Now, our intent was if it's an underpass, we're probably going to pull that into the development a little bit. If it's an overpass, then it might be part of the architecture and kind of fit in the same design. The intent for circulation though primarily is to go ADA up to Gallagher intersection and then follow the south side of the development, but there will still be a strong connection here with that and how it opens up into the development. We're doing this because we don't know when that's going to happen. And if we kind of just left this blank, we'd say, you've done something very underwhelming here. So we want to kind of show what it could be in the midterm and how that can function in the midterm. But we, we have, we have thought about that design and how that will interact with that space as it goes forward.
I may add structurally, and this isn't on the surface aesthetic, but structurally the buildings are designed two stories below ground, the foundation walls to, to be able to handle excavation in the future and that exposure in the future. So we are set up to accept it. That's on the west side of France, or excuse me, the west side of these buildings along France, where you're looking right here, looking west at France from the center of our project, there's an underground parking ramp that sits generally in this area. If you look at the, the footprint of that underground parking ramp, we actually pulled back a big notch in that ramp to allow for the steps to get pulled back into the development to allow proper spacing and a great change along France Avenue for a future potential underpass. So not on the aesthetic side of things, but from a design, trying to think of things and all the options and things that might occur in the future, we tried to incorporate that flexibility.
Thank you.
I had a few questions for you as well. James? Okay. Let's talk about the affordable units and thanks for undertaking that responsibility. Are they just going to be scattered throughout the rental buildings? And, yeah, you're nodding affirmatively, I mean.
For the rental units, yes. So we, it's 10% at 50% AMI is what we're planning to comply with. And then they would be spread across the unit types pro rata. So 10% of three beds, 10% of townhomes, 10% of studios, 10% across the board. So we won't load them all into studios if that's.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brama. And will those units that are spread across types all be finished in the same way as the market rate units?
Correct. The only caveat that I'd mention on the rental apartment side of things, the seventh floor of the apartments that we do on our, our apartments, there is a surcharge would be on the seventh floor and there's an exclusive amenity room up on that seventh floor as well. So if, if affordable renters want to pay the surcharge to be on that seventh floor, they can. So we would offer the same offering to them that we would to anybody else, but it's just that extra charge.
Okay.
Outside of that seventh floor, the unit types finishes are all identical. There'd be no difference between going to a two-bedroom affordable or a two-bedroom. Actually, I mean, it, because they're so identical, we don't actually pre-program. It's like, it's whatever units available in that 10% range, we, someone can, can go to. It's not like, you know, these are the two-bedroom affordable units. They're different and you can only use those ones. We don't do that. It's just 10% of units available, available for affordable across the board.
Same thing true with underground parking?
Underground parking, the way that it's treated for the market rate tenants is that there's a charge. We do the same thing for the affordable units. There's a charge.
So under the agreement that you'd strike with affordable housing person, they'd be paying for the garage space?
Correct. And I would note the rent, the base rent for affordable units does deduct utilities. So if you, anybody goes into the rent tables that are provided by the Metropolitan Council and sets, sets maximum rental rates, I just want to provide the caveat that that, what we would charge someone would actually be less. So if it's a thousand dollars that the Met Council says we can charge, we will end up charging 800 or 850 to account for the cost of utilities because that rental rate is meant to be all encompassing.
Right. I'm going to go back to this height question I had and ask it a little bit different way. Why did you decide to stay at seven stories on three of the buildings?
It's a building code thing. From the construction type that we have to make the project work, seven stories is where we max out.
It's an economic decision.
It, yeah, it's, well, it's, yeah, building, yep, related building code. Yep, correct.
In terms of your ROI. Okay, all right, understood. Go back to that close-up of the entry off France. Please. Yeah, so here's, here's one of the first reactions I had was, I'm walking along the sidewalk on France Avenue, a safe sidewalk. Both my colleagues to the left want to make sure that happens and I think we all do. Or I'm coming across, if we get this thing put together with the county where people could move, and it would be like walking on the promenade, you go underneath France Avenue, I'll use that example, and you come up into this area. The first feeling I had was I'm walking up sort of tentatively into a private area. Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't feel public to me. And I, I don't know how, as I sat here thinking about it, I don't know how to kind of overcome that feeling, but I think there's a way to do it. And how do you, how do you make sure people know that this is a public space? It's surrounded by private property, but it's a public space. How do you, how do you do that? And maybe Mr. Menaric, you, this is maybe your area where you're, you're the landscape guy.
Yeah, and that's, that's definitely a perception thing, right? Everybody sees it differently, but I do think the programming and the activation makes it feel more public. So the restaurants will feel more public, they won't feel private. Activation of the lawn, the art, people can come there for a selfie moment, you know, this is just a placeholder. We don't know what it would be. It could be something very unique.
Office space?
Yeah, the office space is on that commercial level. The restaurants or retail are right on this corner, whether it's a comedy club or a restaurant, those are on this corner. So I think that kind of public activation makes it feel that way. And then, and then having that open space lawn isn't really, with the type of residents that are here, the type of users that are here within this space, that feels like more of a private space. It's kind of like if you compare it to, you know, the Nordic where they have the lawn area and their patios and the seating and things like that in the North Loop. You know, that kind of public lawn area surrounded by restaurants feels public. It doesn't feel private. So I do think that that's where this maybe differs for, as you get deeper into the eastern side, it might feel a little more private with residential doors and things like that, but it is intended to be a little quieter. This is intended to be more public with the types of activation that are on the main level. And I, and I do think that, you know, when that underpass happens, obviously the freeway walkway you talk about will be hanging on the side of the France Bridge. And then the more pedestrian will be the one that goes down and goes on their bikes. We'll still be able to do that, but it'll be more subdued, not the commuter kind of aspect. And then that'll have that direct connection again as well. So.
You know, when I looked at the, when you look at the site plan and you look at the buildings on the site plan from the overhead perspective, my first thought was the buildings to the east looked like, it looked like part of the Pentagon. You know, it just looked, it looked dense from a building standpoint, but when I see it at the street level, it has a different perspective. It has a, it has a much softer perspective. And I have to give you, toss you a compliment on, you know, you've really effectively hidden those amenity decks with, with what looks to me like those walk-up apartments.
Yeah. You talked about different styles of units.
What you see from the overhead, you don't even see from the street level.
Right.
And you might hear some people up there having a good time and a little splash in the summertime, but I thought that was interesting. But the two, I'd say a couple of architectural concerns I still have are that north wall of the southwest building that we talked about where you walk by, you're in the shadows and that building wall is really tall with no podium effect. And then I really think that there's, and I, I'll back up and say, I commend you for trying to recognize that you had four sides of a building you had to deal with. I think you did a great job working on three of the sides. I think it really fell off on the north side of the two north buildings, the northwest and the northeast building. I feel like I'm coming down France Avenue from the north towards the south. And once I get on top of your project, I look in, it's, it's going to look really good. But when I'm driving down there, it's just going to look like another regular apartment building that I'm driving up to on that north side. I just, it's uninspiring from an architectural standpoint on that north side. And you got the parking in there and it looks, it looks like the back of the building is facing sort of, in, in an odd way, facing France Avenue, because that's what I'm, that's what everybody's going to see. Those 20,000 cars a day or whatever they are, they're going to look over there and see something that's not very inspiring. If they're coming from the opposite direction, they're going to see something that's pretty inspiring, but not, that to me is a real letdown.
Could you please?
Sure.
Member Jackson is going to chime in here too on something that's, she's thinking about. Oh, yeah.
What you were talking about.
So on the inside, that nice thing about the north wall that you talked about, the vertical, you know, maybe that's a great place to project movies, sports events, those sorts of things as well, kind of some kind of interactive kind of facade to that as well, but I do understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Lucas, I'll let you handle the.
Yeah, well, that just, just know that that's an expressed concern. I think those are all the questions I've got for you fellows. I'm going to my little list here. Let me check one other thing. Member Pierce, did this conversation cause you to think of anything you wanted to ask at this point in time?
The only other question I had really was just related to financing. We've had a number of developments that, you know, we get this far and they're unable to secure the financing and we've got a couple that's asking for extensions, those types of things. And so just curious for this project, where do we stand?
I'll take the first reply and Mr. Landhouser is here representing the southwest building for Lifestyle. But for the other three buildings, so just the timeline on this project, we're, because the timeline's important, we're expected to close January of '25, start construction in August or September of '25. So here today in June of '24, we don't have it locked, you know, it's not like finalized and I can say, here's the final from the bank and the final equity and everybody's locked up. Now, with all that being said, we do this all the time, you know, we work on projects all the time. We're working in the Twin Cities and other areas. Where we're at in this project, assuming things generally move forward as we're generally proposing, we have equity partners that are, are tentatively committing to this. Financial partners, lenders that are, are tentatively committing to this. The performas work based on the requests that we're making and the project that we're proposing, which is part of the reasons for the seven stories and like we're trying to balance everything, you know, there's, there's all these, you know, a lot of requests that are kind of on the outside looking in, but then on the inside for us, looking at the numbers, we're trying to balance all the requests with making sure it pencils. And a big part of that too is when we do go back and get our appraisals and work with our equity partners and financial institutions, the first thing they're going to do is want to make sure that you're not spending too much to the point that it's going to be infeasible. It's, you know, or, or not cash flow properly. So we're running the analysis now in detail. We feel comfortable with where we're at. Actually, I mean, I feel as confident about being able to make this project work as we do any other project. We're in a strong position. So where we're at today, I feel, you know, as good as you can, barring variables, but Mr. Landhouser?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Ben Landhouser, Lifestyle Communities, 4938 Lincoln Drive, Edina, Minnesota, representing the southwest mixed-use building. Similar to what Patrick just outlined, I'd give you confidence that our team is collectively pretty bullish on just the pent-up demand for owner-occupied product in this area. Of the 45,000 square feet of office we have proposed, we have a single tenant that's already committed to 35,000 of that space. And we also know in working with similar consultants in JLL that there's additional demand for the, the remaining space here in this project. So we're, we're feeling like we're, we've rightsized it, we're not over-killing it. We'll probably have more demand than what we have to provide, which is a good thing in our market. And similarly, all of our investors and financiers are kind of behind this project at, at what we have to offer kind of for where we are here and now.
I may add one run-on comment to that.
Mr. Brama, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The northwest building, if you were tracking along the original proposal to the current, the original proposal was 100% office. A big reason why we switched it out to what it is today is for flexibility and that flexibility is built all around being able to perform. That's the main reason why we have it built out the way that we do. If, if we are successful with leasing, we, we have, I mean, we, we don't want to get overly excited and commit and not be able to follow through, but there's a lot of demand on that northwest site for more office. And we're excited to bring those tenants forward and see what we can get together and hopefully we can flex into something that has even greater commercial use. But a big part of the strategy here is to make sure it is financially feasible and making sure we're following in the parameters that we know our lenders and equity partners require.
Thank you.
You know, ESG knows this, Mr. Menaric knows this, but the reason we kind of probe the way we do is because we represent our town, our town is in the development business with you. And so if we're in this together and we, we reach, we, we think that we can do something together and that's. and that's to be determined yet, we want it to be the best it can be, because it's going to be here for 100 years, for you and for our people in our town. So we just, we're deliberate about it, and we're careful and thoughtful about it, and now we're going to, I think we're done asking questions. Remember, Rissler had one question, and I have to go open it up for public testimony.
Just on the financing, it is really hard to hear that this is something that will require TIF. It is a lot that is right next to Centennial Lakes, it is adjacent to the promenade, it's out of the flood zone, it is a prime piece of Edina real estate. And when we TIF, we take money and we cap it, and all of the additional expenses for fire, for police, for public works, that is not covered, okay? And you can say, okay, yeah, well, the base rate, you're going to get something, but you're adding stress and you're adding cost, and then that ends up having to be shouldered by the property taxes. And we have people who are on fixed incomes and they're seeing their property taxes rise year after year. So if you can avoid TIF financing, that would really be a good thing.
All right, well, you all understand this has nothing to do with TIF tonight. This has to do with a potential site plan approval. That's a question we'd address downstream somewhere, maybe, maybe, maybe not, to Member Rissler's point. All right, thank you.
You too.
And by the way, there may be some questions when we get done with public testimony here and virtually. So folks, this is a public hearing matter, I'm going to open it up for public testimony. If you remember way back when at about five to seven, Director Bennerott said that if you choose to testify tonight, you'll have three minutes, and we like to treat everybody that wants to testify the same, so you'll get a yellow warning light when you've got about 30 seconds left, and then try to be cognizant of that and wrap up your comments when you see the red light go on or soon thereafter as you can, and I'll try to help you with that a little bit if you run over too long. But try to hold it to the three-minute mark if you can, and then we'll be able to get everybody's testimony in. So come on forward if you wish to testify, yea or nay on this project, we're happy to hear your thoughts.
I hope you can hear me through my mask, thank you. Lori Groetz, 5513 Park Place. I attended many, many, many of the Southdale Design Work Group meetings that were led by Mick Johnson. At the last 15 minutes of each meeting, they had opportunity for the public to ask questions. So at one of them, Mick Johnson, they opened it up for questions, and I asked Mick Johnson, okay, so if you're going to be having interior roads, pathways, walkways, public realm, who's going to pay for this? Developers aren't going to want to pay for this. Is this going to be paid for using TIF? His response to me was, no. He says, what the city will do in exchange for the interior roads and the public realm on the inside, the developer will get a change in zoning, they'll get PUD, or the term that Mr. Teague likes to use, a lot of flexibilities. So it was going to be a trade, and it wasn't going to be a burden on the taxpayers. And they're saying 45% of this premier property is going to be public realm, and so that means you better open up the vault, because they're going to put both hands in looking for money. And you may say, well, it's only going to be for 25 years. Well, take a look and ask Richfield what they thought about it with the Best Buy site after 25 years. Best Buy came to the city and said, our property isn't worth anything anymore, we're not renting out our space, there is no need for office space, we need a big reduction. So you can't count on it, what's coming. What I see is public here, I mean, what's a benefit? It's benefit for the tenants that live there, that interior space. As a public person, would I go there? No, uh-uh. France Avenue's a busy street. People go down France, they're going to their stores, they've got their cars, they're doing their groceries, they're not going to stop inside there, it's going to look like a concrete jungle. Have any of you looked at the project that they did at Lynnview on, I think at 65th and Lindale? My husband and I are regular shoppers at the Lakewins Co-op, which is kind of kitty-corner from it. So we watched that as they were building it, and there would be weeks that would go by, sometimes months that would go by, and there wouldn't be any work on the project. And one time my husband said to me, when they do have people working, did you ever notice they never have a full crew? He says, I don't think they've got enough money for a full crew and for materials. They have, they're completed now, it's right on the sidewalk, there are balconies, if somebody wants to drop a water balloon off the balcony.
Ms. Groetz, I need you to have your wrap up.
Okay, all right. Their retail isn't leased, you could shoot a cannon through it, and so please, don't do this to this premier space. It's very, velvet property, and have a little bit more respect, please, for the taxpayers. I'm sorry I took so much time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Groetz.
Thank you for giving me the extra time.
You're welcome.
Hello, Judy Buckley, I live at 806 Coventry Place in Edina. Thank you for this hearing, and in general, I definitely support redevelopment, especially for this area, Macy's definitely is not the best use of it. However, this design does not recognize how special this space is. I do not believe that the promenade is best utilized or enhanced by what I've seen here tonight. The Greater Southdale District Plan states that it encourages innovation, imagination, and democracy to reach beyond current conditions to create an extraordinary place and remarkable daily experience. The new Kowaskis is exactly that. However, I do not believe that the Macy's Development Plan at this point measures up to the vision of the Southdale Design District Guidelines. Regardless of what goes into this plot of land, the southeast corner of the development is the most, excuse me, critical transition point. It's the least commercial area, it's on the promenade, Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail, it leads into Centennial Lakes Park, as well as the areas where people own their homes. The southeast corner should have the largest setback possible and be the most welcoming of the entire complex, and right now, it's claustrophobic. Thirdly, and in conclusion, responsible stewardship of our precious green space, new developments, land use changes, and code variances are vitally important, as we only have one opportunity to get it right. I really appreciated when you said, this is going to be here for 100 years, because I feel that you feel what I'm feeling about that. As an Edina homeowner who lives next to this project, I ask the City Council to ensure that the city follows the Southdale Design Guidelines without variances. Before approving a project, please ask yourself if the final design truly achieves the declared vision of transitioning these special eight acres into an extraordinary place that makes a remarkable daily experience. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley.
Julie Campbell, I live at 313 Coventry Lane in Edina. Hello, Councilwoman Jackson. I've lived in Edina for 27 years, and now being in, in fact, I taught my kids to ice skate at Centennial Lakes, now being in Coventry Lane, we moved there because it's walkable. My husband has one blind eye, walks with a cane, and I just am looking forward to the future. I walk the promenade almost every day, all the way from Coventry up to Target, to the gallery end, sometimes to Southdale. I ride my bicycle on the promenade lane to get up to my doctor's appointment, so I'm a user. It looks to me like the idea of fingers and connectivity are great, the idea of a useful development, great, but if you're connecting to something and you're destroying that something, what's the point? The setbacks that are proposed, the look of these massive blocks completely destroys the promenade. What makes the promenade special is not just the land, which you can measure in feet and setbacks, but it's the light and the air and the sound of that water trickling when they've got the stream going, and the sound of the children laughing when they're looking at the ducklings that used to nest in that pond. It's knowing that you can go on a nice day, throw in your backpack and go get your hair done, or go to Target to pick up your prescriptions. If you make it so that it is another bower, another instance where we're staring into, somebody used the word canyon, that's not helpful. All the amenities in the world, and I love amenities, but all the amenities in the world are useful to us. If we lose the amenity of the light and the air and the green, or in the winter, the snow, if all we have is concrete, that is the impression we'll be left with. So no variation in the current setbacks, please, no impairment of the aesthetic with a wall of development, and let's think about that next 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Mayor Hovland, council members, my name is Peter Bell. I live at 800 Coventry Place. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you some concerns that I have regarding the proposal that is being presented to you tonight. As I'm, I live at 800 Coventry Place, and when I first moved there, I described that to friends of mine as, you know, I've moved to Mayberry, this is just a wonderful place. Frankly, imagine my horror when I heard we're going to have a comedy club possibly in what I considered one of the most tranquil, lovely spots in the Twin Cities area. You can really look at my concerns about this project with two things, and I'll be brief. One is the scale of the project, and many people have talked about that scale in a number of different ways. And I know that I sat on the board of a bank for a number of years, so I understand that you need to make the project work financially, but the scale of it, to me, is much too large for the community that it will be a part of. When you look at Coventry Place, the nearest home to Coventry Place is about an eighth of a mile from this development, and I think that that is a major concern. And the second concern, and the final concern of mine, is the cost viability of this. I still do a great deal in real estate, I'm on the board of a real estate company here in the Twin Cities area, and so I am very, very familiar with the real estate rental market here for commercial property, for restaurants, for apartments and the like. And I also know how banks operate, and the viability of this project, the cost viability of this project is a concern of mine, because if this doesn't work, we are all going to have a huge, huge headache unwinding what would have been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and City Council and staff. My name is Martha Greiner, I live at 309 Coventry Lane, Edina. My close proximity to living at Centennial Lakes in the Coventry Townhomes allows me to walk the promenade and all of Centennial Lakes several times daily. It's the crown jewel of not only Edina city parks, but I would venture to say of the Twin Cities park system. It's remarkable. When I consider the scope of what you're proposing for developing the former Macy's site, it seems to me that Centennial Lakes, the beauty, the tranquility of so many visitors who come, I talk to people every single day down there who have come from all over to enjoy this beautiful park. It's going to be dwarfed by a concrete jungle. I don't think the Macy's site is the appropriate place. All due respect, Mayor Hovland, to you wanting to increase the height of one of the buildings or several of them, I think it's already way too dense in what you have proposed at this meeting. I would like to ask you to all reconsider the size and the scope of what you are trying to do with this precious, unique space. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Greiner.
Hi, good evening. I'm Michelle Langfels, I live at 802 Coventry Place in Edina. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My comments are very off-the-cuff, picking them on the way here, but I've been thinking about this project since it came up, and I know it's very important for us to all be here and to be able to speak what we're thinking. I too live very close proximity, even though I work full-time, I often walk the promenade once or twice a day, I run errands down that way, I walk my little dog, so I'm on it all the time, into the winter, often. I agree with what my folks at Coventry have been saying, this project is way too big, it's too dense, it's not the right look for the area. My husband and I lived at Centennial Lakes in the condominiums in the 90s, and we loved the area, and we started to see the beautiful development that was occurring. And so in our retirement, my husband isn't here today, but he's retired, and we, he said the only place I want to go back and live is at Coventry at Centennial Lakes, because of the beauty. My neighbor Peter says we live in a garden, but that will not be a garden any longer if you put this monstrosity in the area. It's, it is a wonderful place, like, my fellow Coventry neighbor has said is that a lot of people are there from all over, all over, many countries come there to enjoy the park, and when you add all of that density and more traffic, have any of you tried to get out of that little street from Pinstripes to France Avenue? It backs up into the Pinstripes parking lot. I don't think the density has been reviewed very well for the traffic, it is so thick, if I can walk, I walk, because I personally don't want to get out into the traffic around the area. The other thing to consider is the west side of Edina is in dire need of amenities. I lived over by the high school in a home and raised my two children there, and that's the area that we need to be looking at for more amenities for the community, not plopping a huge development where it is one of the best, prettiest parks that we have, and I just hope that you really strongly consider changing the vision for that area to lower density, shorter buildings, definitely not taller. The one apartment building that's on the promenade is already feels so close, and now you're going to be putting two big buildings on there again, and it's just, it's going to take away from that. So thank you for listening, appreciate the time.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Cosar, and I'm at 7200 York Avenue South, number 226, and I have to say thank you for the opportunity, but I have to echo the thoughts and feelings of the people here. I've lived in the Edina area, we're within 1,000 feet, for 10 years. I've walked Centennial Lakes and the promenade for 20 years. It's a jewel, it's a gem, as well as the Nine Mile Trail. And when you go from east- And when you go from east to west, as I was walking last night, my vision of an 11-story building and taking away that light and the fact that there wouldn't be light in that area is very distressing. And that's what people want to walk. And we need distance between any development that is there. It is so close. And I cannot believe, and even when you walk past the bower or by early's, you never see anyone on the first floor patios. And you hardly see them on the patios or the balconies because they're bubbled balconies. I don't get the concept. When single-family homes, you usually have privacy fences. And these balconies are sitting out there. You have no protection against weather, against wind, or against sun or shadows. And I think I agree that whatever is developed in that area needs to be a lower scale, a smaller scale, and to fit in and enhance and embrace the green gem that is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cozart.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Steve Brown. I live at 5528 Halifax Lane. I'm going to change the tone of the conversation quite a bit from what we've just been listening to. Though I do want to start with kind of an emotional point, which is that I represent an organization called Edina Neighbors for Affordable Housing, which has the awful acronym of ENA. But ENA also stands for Everybody Needs a Home. And I want to have people keep that in mind. We hear a lot of people talk about how they love their current home and all the reasons why it's so great. Please keep in mind that other people also need a home. So I don't know if you can see this chart, but I want to try to explain it to you. What I'm looking at here, what you're looking at, is a record of how we're doing on building new affordable housing units. The scale here is units on the left-hand side. And then the years go along the bottom of the scale. And it's pretty obvious that there wasn't a whole lot of activity for a decade. And there was a little activity. And then for the latest comprehensive plan period, you can see there's quite a bit of activity. This council has done a wonderful job recognizing that people need places to live. And that's not a unique situation in Edina. It's true everywhere. At the same time, this blue line right here represents the goal that the city has set for itself of trying to build 180 new affordable units per year. Right now, we're falling short of that goal. And frankly, we've been starting to slip away from some of the progress that we made back in 2023. You can see we had a really strong year. In 2024, we're dropping back down to about 48 units versus a goal of 180 units. And right now, for 2025, we have zero units. That's in part because some of the projects have fallen by the wayside. 5100 Eden Avenue apparently is on hold. So at the moment, we have a challenge. This chart has a totally different scale. This number here is two. These are the units that are ownership units. And you can see we've built very few ownership affordable units. And in the time period representing the comp plan, we've built none. This project has five. So in essence, we're going to build more units in one project than we've built in the last five years. So I think there's some reasons to support this project. I've listed a lot of those in the email that I've sent you. But I do want you to keep in mind that everybody needs a home.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else? And I'll think about it for a minute. We can go online and see if we've got anybody. No, I mean, our, our communications director is just despondent. No one's calling in. Oh, our traffic consultant?
Our traffic consultant is available for any questions.
Yeah, that's a good thought. Question, I think it was just raised here with some of the public testimony was, how are you going to manage traffic in and out on Gallagher with all of that housing activity? That was one question that came up. And then I think Member Rissler might remember what she had in mind, too, for the traffic consultant. I think Director Milner did a pretty effective job of answering it, but he might get confirmation from the traffic consultant.
Yes. Hey, can you guys hear me? Is my microphone working?
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Fitzpatrick, go ahead. Did you hear what we were talking about?
Yeah, yeah. So Milner did address the first comment that I heard in regards to the traffic on Gallagher. When we did look at existing traffic data, we look at existing AM and PM weekday traffic. Is in that area. But during the weekday, coming out of that access, it's actually pretty low. We're looking at maybe 50 vehicles in the AM peak hour coming out of there and maybe 200 in the PM peak hour, which isn't that many vehicles permitted if you look at it. So again, most of our traffic will be using this access. Especially anyone turning less out of the site. But our peak hours and peak days are going to be during the weekday, AM and PM, not during the weekends, especially with the office use. There won't be any, any trips from that and much less trips from the residential during weekday, weekends.
All right. Did that prompt any question or comments from council members? Ms. Fitzpatrick, it might be good if we have you available in a couple of weeks, too, because there may be questions from council members. Director Teague, can you have her? When we, when we go to make a decision on this? Yeah. Anyway, Member Jackson.
Yes. Thank you. So Director Teague, you probably know the answer to this, but how many stories is the bower?
The bower is 18 stories.
18 stories. Okay, thank you.
And while we're on that topic, Maison Green kitty corner here, is that, that's seven, isn't it?
That sounds right.
Member Pierce, now we're just having a sidebar. We thought it was seven.
Sounds right.
All right. And then how tall is the 71 France, the lens by early's?
Yeah, those are six stories with their, I believe there's that half story above, so six to seven.
Okay. All right. Council members, did the testimony cause anybody to have a question for staff or for the applicant? Not hearing anything. So I'm just looking at my notes, too, here. Yes, oh, go ahead, Member Rissler.
The comment about light really resonated. And I was walking along the promenade and actually was able to talk to somebody who was a volunteer helping with the plantings. And what was really interesting is to, you know, see all these plantings that we have put in that rely on direct sunlight. And changing the envi, the environment really looks like it could be changed quite a bit. We may need to even switch out some of those plantings along the promenade. There's a cost of that. And there's also the reality that right now the pump for the water features is completely broken. So, or apparently it needs to be fixed or something. But it's sort of quiet and sad and dry along the promenade because that feature is not up and running. And I just, you know, thinking about financing. And, you know, we've talked about this project as sustainable. But fiscal sustainability is also really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Teague, what's the setback on the east side of this project from the boundary of the promenade? Remember?
The north building is 34 feet. And I believe the south building is 40 feet from the boundary line of the promenade.
Any architect verification on that? 35 feet from the west edge of the promenade? Okay. All right. Now, what Director Teague is recommending is that we close the in-person public hearing, keep the public input option open until Sunday, June 9th, and then continue the action to the June 18, 2024 city council meeting. Is there a motion of that effect by one of our council members? Go move.
Second.
Member Pierce moves. Member Jackson seconds that we close the in-person public hearing in this matter, keep the public input option open until Sunday, June 9th, and continue the action on this matter to the June 18, 2024 city council meeting. Any further discussion on the motion as stated? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Motion passes, and we will take this matter up. You know, inputting that additional public testimony that might come in at our June 18, 2024 meeting. Thank you to everybody for being here. And Mr. Bell, did you, were you here for the presentation from your old group?
I was. I was quite impressed, quite proud of them.
Yeah. So there's the man who used to run the Met Council right in front of us there. Just, I think we've got a salt to stellar team meeting. And I think when we first started that effort, you were still running the Met Council. That's when it started. All right. Thanks.
Couple of planning conferences years, some years ago.
Okay, what else do we have to do? As the chambers clears, that concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda. Move on to reports and recommendations. And the first matter we have there is a resolution accepting donations. And we have some very nice donations this reporting period. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-42 Accepting Donations on behalf of the City of Edina?
Still moved. Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-42 Accepting Donations on behalf of the City of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2024-42 Accepting Donations on behalf of the City of Edina, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Resolution 2024-42 is adopted. As I mentioned, there were some real generous gifts to the city in the Park and Rec and Centennial Lakes Park this reporting period. Park and Rec wise, Carrie Mulhooc, $3,200 for a memorial bench at Pamela Park. Betsy Schneider for a memorial bench at Walnut Ridge Park, the same amount, $3,200. Over at Centennial Lakes Park, and I'm sure many people have seen that Golden Retriever sculpture piece over there done by Nick Legaros that Dennis Schulsted sponsored. And now Dennis has given us another $10,000 in memory of his deceased wife for Centennial Lakes Park landscaping, flowers, and maintenance. Very generous gift on his part. And then Annette Vines and Mick Elder, another $3,200 for memorial bench at Centennial Lakes Park. So that, that's the report out on the donations that were made, as I said, during this reporting period. And now we have Resolution 2024-21. Director Teague, as this matters well, we need to discuss the potential extension of the final site plan approval for lots one through three, block one, AMN addition. That's 7701 France, 3601 and 3625 70th Street. Director Teague.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So on June 21st of 2022, the council approved final site plans for those three sites that were mentioned. This is the Orion and Mortenson developed mixed-use development. The first phase of that project has been constructed. That's the, the smaller site, the US Bank. But the remaining three sites have gone undeveloped. Site plans are good for two years by city code. So these will expire June 21st of this year. Developers haven't been able to secure their financing due to current market conditions. Therefore, are requesting a one-year extension of their site plans. They believe that they'll be able to construct, or at least pull a building permit within the next year. So staff is recommending that the council adopt the Resolution 2024-41, granting the one-year extension. And representatives of the development team are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Good. Council members have any questions for Director Teague or any of the development team? Member, Member Jackson.
Yes, I'd love to hear an update on, on what you're hearing about this site.
Good thought. As maybe as well as 7250, might get an update on that one, too.
Well, good evening, council members. Ted Carlson with Orion Investments. And Dan Lesser with Mortenson Development is here with me along Drew Stafford from Orion. So thank you for taking time to catch up with us tonight. You know, we, we had very good traction on the project. And then if you read the headlines and see what has happened in the financing markets, they just simply evaporated on us. And with the rise in mortgage rates that really shut down the lending market for commercial development. For all intents and purposes, banks and traditional equity sources have been sidelined. And you've seen it not just with us on this project, which we still firmly believe in, but on projects not only across the city, but across the Twin Cities and throughout the country. So we still believe in the design. We believe in the programming. We believe in the team. And we're requesting from you tonight an opportunity for another 12 months to put a shovel in the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. You follow on? Member Jackson.
Yes. So you believe in it? And are the investors believing in it? And, you know, it's the, I think there were some rumblings about maybe changing some of the design. Does the design will stay the same? And you're working on getting financing put together? Is that?
Yeah, I, I would say that the financing market is starting to show signs of life. What we need in the commercial market is transactions. And whether they're good or bad, transaction proves that there's a market to be had. And that's starting to happen. You're starting to see headlines with projects selling. And there's still a real flight to quality for office occupiers. We watched their earlier testimony. And there was some concern and consternation. But with our project, it's designed to accommodate smaller users and smaller tenants in a different, modern scale where police, people want to work, they want to live, and they want to be a part of the community. And there's a lot of thoughtful time and effort that went into that design and programming. So, yeah, we believe that the demand is, the demand is there. The financing piece is not there. And it's starting to show signs of life.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Mr. Lesser, would you come on up, too? I want to, I think Member Pierce has a question, maybe for Mr. Carlson. But I, I think getting Mortenson's perspective on it, too, that's, you know, doing work on a nationwide basis. And, and you're here this evening because you obviously care about this project and the future of this project. And you'd like to have your perspective as well. But maybe turn to Member Pierce first to see if he had a question he wanted to ask.
No, I think my question, actually, you can each answer. And it's really just based on whatever your view is. So if you're going to give us your market view, my question is, what's our confidence factor that within a year's time that we are actually ready and confident that we can put a shovel in the ground?
I'll go. Dan Lesser with Mortenson Development, 700 Meadow Lane, Golden Valley. Thank you, council, and Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council, and Mr. Mayor. We do work across the country. We are seeing signs of life with not just financing, but going vertical. Seattle, that's happening now. And typically, we lag a little bit, and that's okay. But those transactions need to happen. Capital needs to go out, and then it gets a little more competitive there, and they start to go back to the places that they were two, three, four years ago. The transaction piece Mr. Carlson talked about is near and dear to me. One of my first high reses was Foremark Downtown, and that just sold for half of what we built it for almost 10 years ago. So, good or bad, those transactions need to happen because there's appetite for our market, and they need to run out of options to purchase at half price. And that's what we're seeing right now, is a lot of that churn.
So, when you...
And your confidence factor?
Fairly to very. Is that fair? I don't like percentages. The conversations are starting to come back, and that's actually what gives me confidence, is people that we were talking to a year, two years, three years ago about this project specifically are calling back saying, where's that project? Did you still have it? Did you actually close on the land? And I think our confidence factor as Mortenson is high because we bought the land. We have patience, and we have the means for those patients.
Yeah, thanks for saying that, Dan. I think it goes a long way when you've got a partner like Mortenson that made a $12 million investment just in dirt. And that's a testament to the community, the project, and their financial prowess and staying power. So, to answer that question, Councilmember Pierce, I think the finance market's a lot better today than it was 12 to 18 months ago, and continues to improve. So, I...
I'm also confident that we will mow the boulevard more, which we did today. So, I just wanted to get that out there, too, right before the rain hit.
Of the remaining projects, which do you anticipate moving forward first?
Within this project and the west side of France. I think we've got the west side of France, 7250 France. I think there's a 50/50 chance. If not, I like to be a little conservative to maintain some sanity in this market, but I think there's a really good chance that we are going vertical on 7250 yet this year.
Just for the site that we're talking about right now, of the parking lot, the luxury apartment complex, and the office building, which one do you see moving with more potential?
I think that the demand for high-quality office space continues to increase on a daily basis. Centennial Lakes has maintained incredible occupancy. You may have read that Normandale Lakes has some landlord challenges now, so that's 1.9 million square feet of potentially unhappy tenants. As soon as Dan and Drew and I can get the capital markets to loosen up, we'll be ready. And to further answer that question, we were 40% pre-leased on the office retail piece. And even with that, which was record-setting in our market, when liquidity came to an end with traditional and non-traditional debt equity sources, we just simply can't move forward.
Thank you, gentlemen. Other questions from council members? All right. Director Teague?
Thank you.
And the applicants are, yes, stand by here. We pass a motion to approve Resolution 2024-41, which should extend the final site plan approval for 7,001 France, 3601, and 3625 70th Street for one year. Is there a motion of that effect?
Still moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-41, which should extend the final site plan approval for 7,001 France, 3601, and 3625 70th Street for one year. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2024-41, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Motion's approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for being here tonight. Mr. Stafford, I'm trying to remember, did you ever play for Edmonton or Florida? I can't remember.
Ah, God.
All right. We are down to the last item of the evening from an action standpoint, and that is ordinance 2024-04. That's the tree protection ordinance, and we've had a work session and council discussion and meetings with many folks in the community that are concerned about tree protection. I think everybody's heard us say everybody's concerned about tree protection, and the question is whether we overreached a bit on our ordinance, and might we do some things. And one area that I think we didn't, we didn't think about carefully was the undeveloped lot. And we, there aren't that many in Edana. I suspect that's why we didn't give it that much consideration, because we're mostly concerned about tarred-on-rebuild. But there are some undeveloped lots in Edana, and through our discussion, I think staff has figured out a way that they can deal with some of these things. So, Director Teague is going to take this matter as well, and I don't know if Manager Neil has any thoughts he wanted to express here on top of it, but...
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things to say. One of the goals we had during the work session where we previously discussed some council-initiated changes to this ordinance was that you wanted to see them and at least consider them for adoption as soon as possible. So, in order to do that as soon as possible, we had to act pretty quickly, and we had to get an ordinance put together and then get it publicized or posted for a 10-day notice, which, and we did that, and that enables you to take a look at it tonight. That means that there were some things that we had some discussion on that aren't included in this ordinance, because we didn't sense that there was consensus on council to the extent that we needed to put it in the agenda, to put it into the ordinance tonight. We can adopt this ordinance, you can amend this ordinance, the items that are in the ordinance, but because of the timeline we're on, we do not recommend adding new content to the ordinance as it is. Anything new, we would need to adopt in an additional ordinance consideration down the line, maybe soon, but not tonight.
So, you're thinking about the circumstance where we might want to consider a variance process or some kind of undue hardship process?
That's a great example, right?
Take that and work on that later.
Right. Because that wasn't, we didn't feel there was consensus for that. That's not included in what was posted, so we shouldn't add that to the ordinance, but we can add it to a new version of a new ordinance, soon.
Terms of the, let's just use this as an example, the financial guarantee on the last page on paragraph 15. If we wanted to have a discussion about the maximum cash escrow or letter of credit amount, that could be done tonight.
The amount or the methodology, yes, that's right.
Thoughts from council members? Member Agnew.
I'll get us kicked off. So, overall, just want to thank staff for the quick turnaround on this. I know, you know, we obviously have some concerned residents and some key, like, land components that are up and impacted by this, so I appreciate how quickly we were able to move. The only one that I do want to have, well, I'll discuss any of them, the one I'm most passionate about is number 15, paragraph 15. The maximum cash escrow or letter of credit shall be $50,000. So, I have two thoughts on this. One is that, for the time being, we could strike this. And the reason for that is because today, the two properties I believe that are driving the highest escrow amount are those that are on the unbuilt lot. And so, they will, if we're just thinking about, like, stopping the bleeding right now, they will be, I think, looking to staff to confirm this, but I think that they will be, they'll see some relief from that phase of our work or the update to the ordinance. And that will allow us to maybe have some more analysis and try and figure out what that right spot is. I'm more of the opinion that it should maybe be a percentage basis. I would throw out, right, like, something like 5%, just based off of some of the data that I was able to collect from the city. 5% of the future home price of what is being constructed on that site. But again, I think that that's one, just kind of an idea that you're all just being hit with, which is why I might say, strike it for tonight, and then bring something back here in the form of some type of maximum that could be, have more analysis applied to it.
Okay. Thanks for those thoughts. Other thoughts on that financial guarantee issue?
Well...
Member Pierce, go ahead, and then we'll go to member Jackson.
Did you guys want to respond to that? You were huddling.
I have thoughts on another verbiage that I would like to have not added.
Okay. So, I actually was talking to Manager Neil. Were you guys huddling on that or something else? Okay, all right. So, the, I would just want to validate first, because I think, member Agnew is correct, that the immediate issues would be addressed with the unbuilt lot information that's in here, criteria that's in here. So, I just want somebody to nod their head. I see a nod there. If that is the case, I think it actually would be wise to strike that and then take the time to really just, you know, maybe think through it a little bit more, maybe run a few more scenarios to just come back with something that is more, I'll say, more concrete, if that makes sense. So, I actually agree with that, if we are addressing the, given that we are addressing the major issues that have been raised. So, that was one. The, I like the, I am glad that we do have in here the unbuilt lot, that criteria, and so, thanks for that. And then, the only one that I had questions on, and I think I understand this, is the plantings. And so, there was a, you know, we had a number of questions around if the homeowner is still responsible for the plantings. Do the plantings have to be on the property, and the new homeowner may not want those trees on the property? And so, if I'm interpreting this correctly, the city will now control where those plantings can happen, and they can happen throughout the city? Am I interpreting that correctly?
I don't think this amendment covers that.
On page four, number 14.
Page four, number 14, yeah.
So, the, you know, the intent is that now, as opposed to the current way the ordinance is written, all the required trees must be planted on that address.
Yeah.
This would allow for trees to go on neighboring properties. One of the thoughts we had is that, you know, before any of these construction projects start for the, you know, you know, demo, new home rebuild, you're required to send a letter out to all your neighbors to inform them of there's a new home going in here. You have to schedule a meeting with all your neighbors to inform them there's a new home going here. We were thinking that that radius that's already currently used for that would be perhaps an appropriate radius for those plantings to go in for that project.
Okay, so still, you know, on that, that same street, but you're...
It'd be like, yeah, whatever, I think, you know, depends.
Kind of expanding the space.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the intent.
Yep, got it. So, I think that makes sense. One of the things, and I get where Manager Neil is coming from in terms of not making changes here, I'm actually okay with that, but I would actually put it in the same comment as before. I mean, taking some time to make sure that we're getting the right outcome that we want from whatever changes we have in here. I think we should be doing that. Because the, when I think about this one, I actually like the idea of taking those funds and then the city deciding where we need to replant those trees. I kind of like that in concept, because there might be other areas within the city where we want to try to add some tree canopy. And so, the question, though, that I have is if we do that, then who's responsible for making sure that those trees survive?
So, in that case, you know, as you read in there, it'd be at the city's discretion. And so, it's, you know, the builder or the, you know, homeowner's responsibility to work with their, you know, neighbor when they're, you know, working on a project to plant it on the adjacent property owner's property. And currently, I haven't had any projects, you know, that we've gone through where, you know, I would want to take a tree from someone's property and plant it on city property.
Yeah.
But as you said, instead, I would much prefer to use those funds to fund things like the residential tree sale and, you know, other planting projects throughout the city that we are, you know, just doing with our normal kind of, you know, upgrades and projects that we do as we're redoing a park or something like that.
So, in this case, that actually doesn't change then, so the homeowner would still be responsible?
Or the builder, or the permit holder, whomever is the applicant.
Because we really are thinking it's going to be within a couple of lots. I'm just using that as hypothetically. You're not actually taking a tree from Cahill and moving it to, to Braemar, as an example. We're not doing that.
So, I believe, you know, technically, the way it's written, that would be possible. Like I said, you know, one of the thoughts is, like, you know, something goes out with that letter that goes out upon the initial, you know, kind of a annunciation of the project, and then, you know, that would be, you know, but still, the way it's written, it could go anywhere within the city limits.
Within the city limits. Okay, thanks.
I would like the, at the very beginning, it says this division applies to, and then the words have been added, the following permits and land use applications on properties that are zoned R1 and R2. So, basically, what this is doing is saying for commercial, R3, R4, anything that's not R1 or R2, the tree ordinance does not apply. And I would like to have that highlighted text stricken, because I think...
I thought we were dealing with that separately.
That would be part of that next step, where this is on the EEC's work plan to come forward with a, with a commercial tree preservation ordinance.
But there's more zones than just R1, R2, and commercial?
There, in every other zone other than R1 or R2, my understanding is that they're working on something they proposed to us that would cover tree protection in those zoning districts.
I believe they're pretty close to being done, right?
We don't have to do it here. It's coming.
Their report is done. They just want the opportunity to present their findings to the city council, and they don't want to be short-changed on the work that they've done. So, they're coming back with ordinance suggestions that would meet all the other zones, all the other zoning areas, and staff supported a lot of the work that they've already done. So, I think this is going to be tied directly to this residential one at some point, but they want an opportunity to present to the council.
Sure.
And it's not only commercial that they're covering. This is going to be comprehensive.
You can ask them when they bring their report, but that's my understanding.
Well, just clarify that, though. So, I was thinking now that this was just, like, it could re, this is just for a residential ordinance for tree protection, and then there would be a commercial one for tree protection that's coming.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but...
Okay, we're...
That's what I'm hearing.
But it's like, we're having this conversation, but what about industrial? What about R3, R4? It's going to be all in the commercial?
But I think, I think Director Milner's point is that let's not cut off this commission from the work that they're doing and shortstop them by just sort of knee-jerk deciding tonight we're going to include all these other zones, because zoning code designations, without really knowing what we're doing either.
Do we have R3 and R4?
We don't have an R3 or R4, but we have a PRD 3, 4, 2. We would, the message that I'm hearing is, this would just apply to R1 and R2, and we'll have to work with the EEC to make sure that all those other zoning districts are covered. have to work with the EEC to make sure that all those other zoning districts are covered.
Thanks for raising that issue on, go ahead, Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I have a couple of functional questions, and then I have content questions. So, the first one is just a general question. When we adopt a new ordinance, do we have a public hearing, or no, we don't? We have public notice?
In the zoning ordinance, Chapter 36, we have public hearings, but outside of that, we do not. This is Chapter 10.
Okay, good, thank you for that. Then, my second question is, in the way this ordinance functions, if someone decides they don't want to plant any trees, any of these changes don't change the fee that they would pay? Is that correct? So, if they say, there's one tree, it's, you know, just fits the size, it's a $3,000 cost, they say, I don't want to deal with a tree, I pay $3,000. None of the changes that we make tonight will change that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Well, the cap is $50,000, but, but would the fee cap at $50,000 as well? That's my question. So, if you, you have six old oak trees, you clearcut it, it's $100,000, your fee would be capped at $50,000?
Or you could use the example of the guy we just had with us, who had $45,000 in escrow, and he says, nobody wants, that the new owner doesn't want new trees. I think, under this language, that money would be defaulted into the, into the city, and then Luther would decide where he wants to spend the money, you know, buy trees and put them somewhere.
Right, but my question is, with the cap, the fee is also capped? If the escrow is capped at $50,000, then the fee is capped at $50,000? Okay. So, then, I like Member Agnew's idea of not addressing that tonight.
At the, yeah, let's talk about that a little bit more, too, because when I, if you take out that last sentence, that defaults us to the language that exists right now, which is that then somebody would pay 110%, is that what it is?
Well, it's a, it's a fee based on the size tree that's being removed.
Which could exceed $50,000.
Which could exceed $50,000, but I believe the ones that were really expensive were these wooded lots.
Yeah, but we've got more wooded lots, we've got more issues like that coming, I'm sure. I know of one right now where they're trying to subdivide a lot on Mohawk, it's full of trees. So, to me, the question is...
And that's not covered by the change of the unbuilt lot?
It would be, but they'd still be subject to the potential cap or this other formula for the trees that aren't in the exempt zone, right?
Well, I don't know. I haven't seen the, I haven't seen the site.
They got this exemption for this area that's shown in Paragraph 6, the building pad, the deck, patio, five-foot radius of driveways, installation of infrastructure, that's all kind of an exempt zone, but anything outside of that, if they want to take trees down, they're going to be subject to the financial requirements. And that's, that gets to the cap issue. Do we still want to think in that circumstance about having a cap?
That is correct, Mayor, members of the council. What is before you this evening is a $50,000 cap. You did talk about the relief that an unbuilt or previously undeveloped lot would have. We do not know what that reduction or impact would be until those permit applications look back at what this new ordinance would be and find out from what they're proposing, where that 10-foot radius offset would be, where that five-foot radius offset would be, that we're adding to the language, to then recalculate what that would be. So, we do know that there would be relief, we do not know how much at this point. So, I just want to be clear on that, that I couldn't tell you tonight if it was the $81,000 escrow, what that would go down to this evening. We would have to work with that permit applicant to resubmit and look at what that exemption would be.
Thank you.
Member Jackson, is your concern that the $50,000 cap, there could be a scenario where we're taking out trees that are higher in value and we can't replace them?
My concern is creating a perverse incentive, that if you're going to take out three trees that are, you know, the heritage tree, that's $50,000 right there, and there are, but you want to clearcut it and make a great big house, and there are seven big trees on that lot. So, you pay $50,000 to take out three, you pay $50,000 to take out seven, and we lose those additional four heritage trees. And I've seen that happen, and I drove by several lots on the way here this evening, kind of counting the oak trees, said, yep, that one would, you know, potentially be, could be clearcut with a minimal, well, not minimal, like $50,000 is a lot of money, but I just don't want to create that perverse incentive to, well, I have to pay this much anyways, why not clearcut the lot? And that's my concern.
Mayors and council, I did, we are not proposing it this evening based on what Manager Neil had indicated about the public notice period for the changes we recommended of the ordinance. However, one of the things we did discuss is more of a, an idea of a progressive escrow. Would you like to see some examples?
Yes.
Certainly. I might need help filling this up. They're switching it over. Mayor, council, we did work on two examples for you, just to kind of show you of where we could go. I kind of go back to the default, I always say, it'd be great to have a quick no or a long yes on this, so if it's something you're not interested, it would be good to know, we don't have to pursue that any longer, but these are just quick examples of what the current, the, a very rudimentary example of what the current example is. So, this is a removal calculation, and again, there's two categories, there's the protected tree and the heritage tree by definition. In this scenario, if you look in this portion right here, this is the caliper inches removed, so again, that's not the number of trees, that's the cumulative inches of removal. This is the replacement percentage, so again, a protected tree is valued at 75% of those caliper inches, but a heritage tree is 100. We also looked at in this, this evening, that that maximum escrow is at $50,000. So, in this scenario, this would be a fictitious lot where they removed 102 inches of a protected tree, 54 and 1/2 of a heritage tree, for 131 total inches after you do the formula. Very rudimentary, there's more to it than this. That property elected to replace 57 inches of, of trees back on the lot. So, under that scenario, their total escrow would be $50,000, their replacement value would be $17,100, that total not replaced is $33,000. I believe that's the example that you indicated that could go towards other forestry initiatives, fund the tree sale, et cetera. This is an example of a progressive escrow, so bear with me, and I'll explain this as well. It's a lot of information on the screen. And if you look at the top, there's a calculation 1A and a 2A, so kind of two ways we could look at this. The first is to look at a progressive removal rate. This almost, when you think about it as a progressive tax plan, right? We have brackets of removal, so you could, we could look at this and say, up to 50 inches of removal, 50 to 70, 51.1 to 75, I think you get it, 75 to 100, 100 and greater. You could also have a progressive removal value, where your first 50, for example, are at a lower rate, that once you get over 100, it goes to a higher rate of removal. So, again, that would kind of get to your point of saying, we don't want to incent or hit a cap, and then you might as well keep going. That would be the same way with the replanting. So, not only would you say, the more you take out is more expensive, but also the more you plant, then you would get more of a credit back, so there would be an incentive to plant more. So, you'd have a progressive rate for the planting and also for the value of that. Just wanted to point out a couple of things that are currently in what you have for this evening, is that is that credit back for an ISI arborist, right, to help with these calculations, help that homeowner. Is this a healthy tree? Is it a diseased tree? So, that's that maximum of $2,500. We also added in, again, a credit for planting on off-site property. So, again, that would help reduce that calculation. So, in 2A, we just tweaked that a little bit, you could look at that in a different standpoint, up to 30 inches, 30 to 50, I think you get the point there, but that escrow per inch could be higher. Right now, we say 300 for a protected tree, 500 for a heritage. You might find that those upper levels or upper level of heritage trees might be worth more than $500, might be 600, right? That's part of where we wanted to get some feedback on, is this interesting to you and should we pursue it? This is just kind of a summary table of what you could compare to. So, under the existing escrow, that 74 inches of non-replacements, $33,000, but if it was more on that progressive side, that could be more on the $20,000 with that incentive to plant. You could look at that as a higher value, you want to place on trees at those upper levels of removals, that would, again, then increase, increase that duty to plant. We also looked at a smaller scale one, so you kind of get the scope and sense of what we're talking about. This one had 66 inches of removal, as, as an example, and 25 replacement. So, again, that escrow drops down from $26,000, the replacement caliper inches come in at $7,500, it's $18,850. But if you were to do it on that progressive, you could look at a $7,000 escrow, or a higher value one is $10,000. This one even has five caliper inches planted off-site, maybe that's, you found one neighbor to plant a tree on or something like that, right? So, again, it's looking at, how do we not get to a point, as you mentioned of, we kind of hit a point where we might as well keep removing, right? So, lesser on the upfront removals, higher penalty on the highest, and then same thing to incent back, you know, is there a calculation, if it's financial, that you're worried about? Is the more I plant back, the more I do some legwork to get more on my neighbor's property or an adjacent property, the more credit I could get back under those scenarios? So, again, that is not before you this evening, but that's one of the items we talked about is looking at a different formula. So, that's, we kind of wanted to get some feedback tonight to say, is this something you're interested? We could further develop what that bracket looks like, what that cost is as well.
That, I'm very interested in that, and especially, I do like the designation between the protected tree and the heritage tree, so we'd want to keep that, but thank you for doing the calculation. It is a lot of information, but I like the idea of, of, because one of the people who spoke before, they had a tree next to the house, and they wanted to do an addition, it was the one tree, and in that sort of situation, you want to be a little more flexible, but then, if you're going to clearcut, you're going to pay, because I think that's what we want to disincentivize. So, I like that a lot. I do have other comments, but I don't know if people want to talk about this part first. Okay, so, the other thing is, the change from 36 months to 12 months, and it's my understanding that the 36-month figure originally was sort of the survival rate of trees, and when we met upstairs, we talked a little bit about the science. I know 12 months is what a tree is guaranteed. Is there a way we can write this that guarantees it's gone through a full growing cycle? So, maybe a year will do it, but, you know, it is 15 months. Tell us a little bit about the, the science of, of growing trees and the two time periods.
So, you're correct with the, you know, if you remember from the original inception of the ordinance, one of the biggest complaints, you know, we were getting, you know, besides cutting down all the trees, is that when they replant them, they all die, or they just, you know, replant little sticks, and it doesn't, you know, provide anything. And so, the 36-month guarantee was to ensure that the tree survived and, and to, you know, incentivize that, that survival of, of the trees, because otherwise, you're, you know, putting in all this work and all these inputs for, for nothing. And, and then two, you know, that's the other reason, you know, I wanted to add in the ISA certified arborist portion, because their expertise will, you know, be able to help with that as well, and, you know, it's, you know, offer that, that advice to, you know, builder, homeowner, whomever, to ensure the, you know, survivability and viability of those trees.
So, we've got to balance, you know, the health of the tree and the complexity of the transaction. Would 15 months give us sort of, you know, my, my, my feeling with guarantees on plants is they die the day after the warranty gives out, no matter how much you care for them. So, would a little bit longer time make a big difference or not?
I think it would help with the, you know, ensuring or incentivizing the, you know, the survivability of, of the trees and, and, you know, giving people a reason to, you know, keep them alive.
So, I don't know if, what my fellow members think, but I'm, I'm willing to go 15 months, 18 months as opposed to a year. A little, I think a year is awfully fast.
Yeah.
Because you just don't know what's going to grow.
Director Teague?
I was just going to offer that on, for the commercial requirements, the letter of credit that we hold is for two years?
And so, I, I do want people to be back, and then I have one more question or issue.
Yeah, just think about that 15-month thing of yours, and the suggestion in the context of when you plant trees. So, when, when is the optimum time? When are most people planting trees? So, you can kind of figure out that cycle.
Fall is the preferred time, spring and fall are the two main planting, you know, seasons here. Now, with some of the stuff I'm doing and some of the projects we're working on, I've planted a tree in every single month of the year here in Minnesota, and so, for builders, construction, in my opinion, it doesn't matter. Obviously, easier in the spring and fall, but you can plant whenever, you know, with the trees paid.
My, my concern is that the time starts ticking when they get their building, or when it's closed.
Once they get their CO.
When they get their, yeah, the...
Certificate of occupancy.
Certificate of occupancy, thank you. And if that's December 1st, you know, we're not going to know if that tree survived until, you know, spring comes 18 months later, or, you know, 15 months later. So, that's my concern, and so, Director Teague?
What I was thinking about was, what you were making was that if you planted a tree in the fall, 15 months would run the following winter, so how would, how would that help?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to do the calculation, which is why I, I don't know. So, I, my nightmare scenario is you plant it in the middle of winter, has one season, it's kind of alive, but then it doesn't make it through the next winter, because it never established its roots, you know?
Can I ask a, just kind of a follow-up? So, regardless of the 15, 18, or 24 months, if the tree dies within that window, what, then what happens?
Then you already hear it fall. So, as it's written in the ordinance, it would be at the applicant's option to replace the tree at, at that point, or, you know, they don't have to replace it and it would just come out of the, the fee schedule? And, you know, like Member Risher said, most nurseries, when you're buying, you know, potted material, so one-year guarantee, with, with larger, you know, material, and two, it varies depending on who your provider, landscape architect, so on and so forth, is, you know, and like Carrie stated it, for most of our commercial projects, two years is, is the norm.
Well, I, maybe it's in here and I just don't understand. So, if I take out a heritage tree and it's, and I'm at the cap, so I've taken out a bunch of trees, I'm at the $50,000, we go and we plant 50,000 worth of trees, and they all die within 12 months, or is the city coming back to me for another $50,000? Or are we just...
So, for the, for the escrow release, we have a form online that you fill out that provides, you know, your entire planting plan, the species, location of, of said plantings, and that's, that's where currently in the ordinance where the certified arborist is required for that backend, for the release of that escrow, to verify the validity and health of, of those trees.
So, you don't have to pay a second amount of money, but the money that's being held in escrow, you lose?
Unless you replant.
Unless you replant, yeah.
But the point James is raising, Member Pierce is raising, what about the situation where you've, you've defaulted on putting back the number of trees that you need to put back, so now your, your money goes into the pot? Now, you decide to plant a tree in a park or give it to somebody to plant in their yard, and it dies. There's no consequence to that? Because you've already, you've already gotten the person... already, you've already gotten the person's money.
Yeah, there's no consequence to the applicant.
I mean, that's not, there's no, there's no guarantee there.
Correct.
If you, as the city, decide the arborist plant, take that tree and plant it in the park, and it dies, it's on us. You just got to go get
So my, so there'd be no, nothing would happen to the applicant? And two, you know, like we were saying, my first plan is not to plant any more trees in our parks with any of these funds. It'd be to fund our tree sale and other, you know, you know, tree incentives, you know, such as that. And, you know, not me out there planting. Eventually, I'm sure that would be the case. But at that point, we've retained the funds, the applicant is, you know, in their house, living there, and
I don't see how that, if, I don't see how the language of 14 helps you with the tree sale.
That's different. The money that's waived in an escrow, I put $50,000 in, I say, I'm not planting any trees. The $50,000 then helps Luther with his tree sale. He can use that to fund the tree sale. But the different site is if I have to plant one tree and my neighbor, or I have to plant three trees, I only want to plant two, and my neighbor says, hey, I'd love to have a tree. I plant it in their yard and it dies, I don't lose any money.
Where's the language dealing with the default?
So was that what you were, Luther, answering for? If, for paragraph 14, the tree replacement is being fulfilled by planting a tree on a different site, if that tree dies, what happens?
So at that point, it is still on the applicant to, you know, maintain the health of that tree, even on an adjacent site or off-site location?
So I, like, I just don't like, if, just being honest, I don't like this at all. So I get 100% what you're saying, Member Jackson. But if I'm on, you know, I'll give a couple scenarios. If I'm on an unbuilt lot, I follow this process, you tell me within the buffer which trees I can take out, right? If I go into the buffer and I take out trees and I escrow funds for that, I honestly think, from a government perspective, that should be it for the controls. And so the money goes in, and either I decide I'm going to do some plantings, or if I decide I'm going to give that money to the city and let them deal with it. I think the homeowner should be done at that point. So this kind of feels, it kind of feels like we're approaching, for me, an uncomfortable government control of private property. And so, but I get it, right? I get the whole thing. I would rather have, I like the unbuilt lot piece, but I, this trying to go from 12 months to 36 months to make sure the homeowner's trees live, if we care about it that much, and I'm not saying we don't, then the city should just be funding, making sure those trees don't die, instead of going back and putting it on the homeowner and then having the homeowner lose funds if trees die.
So what Mr. Teague said, Director Teague said, is that for commercial builders, we do go back and check to make sure what they planted grows.
And I think we should, because they are in a commercial business, right? They're developer, whatever they're doing, yes, they should do that. But as a private homeowner, I really don't think we should be doing that.
I'm going to push back a little bit, because some of these homes are not being, the trees are not being cut down by the homeowner. They're being cut down by single-family home developers. And I think that's kind of where the rub is here. Because the homeowners
Talking about the unbuilt lot, no?
No, no. I'm talking about a tear down. And what has been happening is that the neighbors, and this is the argument we've been having all along, is like, you move to a neighborhood, Edina, because it's a developed city and it has a tree canopy. This tree canopy is disappearing as we are doing these tear down homes. The tear down homes, they take a small home, they tear it down, clear cut the lot, build a big tree, maybe, maybe not, plant a couple of replacement trees. So the concern is that, A, we're losing our tree canopy, we lose value to our city that way. And the people, some people are tearing down and building their own home, but a lot of the tear downs are not done by the people who are living there afterwards. And so there's a business incentive to clear cut the lot and build the house and then plant things. So it's, I don't see the difference, honestly, between a commercial developer coming in and building an apartment building, or a store, or a country club and building trees, or a developer coming in and building a single-family home and planting trees. So to me, it's, they're both business decisions. And it feels uncomfortable to require someone to water the trees, but some, we have to capture what's being lost. It's an externality that we, that the city's been absorbing. So in my, you know, if my neighbor tears down their house, sell it to a developer, they tear down all the trees, build something else, the externality of losing that shade, that coolness and everything, I have to absorb.
I don't disagree with, I understand what you're saying. I don't disagree with that. I get uncomfortable where it feels like government is trying to tell the homeowner what they can do with their private property.
Well, once they own it, yeah, once they own it, they own it, right? And that's what the discussion we had upstairs, like, well, I could go cut down all my trees today if I wanted to, okay? But if I want to have a tear down, and someone's going to make profit off of getting rid of my house and clear cutting my trees, I think they need to absorb the cost to the neighborhood of cutting down those trees. Because if I live there and I cut down all my trees, I will hear about it. I will absorb the cost of that. But the developer who moves on to the next thing does not absorb the cost of that. They profit off of the loss that their neighbors feel. And that's the concern here.
From the examples that we've heard, the developer is putting that, the owners, on how many trees need to be removed on the private homeowner. And so the, on their client that they're building the home for. So, but I totally get what you're saying.
That, so, I mean, you don't have to agree with me, but that's, that's where I'm coming from.
I get you.
Does the Energy and Environment Commission had a chance to look at this?
No.
Okay. I have a suggestion, because out of respect for their work, and it seems as if we're not exactly going in a direction where we're going to make a decision quickly or even soon. What if we tabled this so that we could get their feedback? It would clear up whether or not, you know, where they are in terms of generating policy for all of the other zones that are not R1 or R2. And they might have some thoughts about, should it be a year? Should it be 18 months? Should it be, you know, something like that? But they are the experts, and I feel badly that we're talking about this and they have not weighed in.
The reason we're doing this is because we've got two homeowners with 110,000 and 85,000 escrow that are going to close by the end of the month. So that's why we're trying to deal with one problem right now. Otherwise, we can't, we can't get it in force and effect before they close and they can calculate how much money they would get back.
Okay, but points about, like, how long the tree should live, you know, be monitored, that's not something that has to be decided tonight?
I don't, this is a great discussion, because it points out all of the, I think, legal infirmities that we got here, frankly.
So if we reset, Member Agnew suggested tabling the 50,000, $50,000 cap.
Removing the $50,000 cap.
Moving it.
Yeah, removing it from this one, but considering it down the road.
That's what I meant by table, yeah. But remove it from here and then
So with respect to, and here's the answer, here's the thing we don't know, the problem with this idea, or potential problem, is that then you default to the language of 15A. Require cash escrow or letter of credit satisfying the same amount of 110% of the value of the tree replaced, identified in the tree protection plan. They said they don't know until they get the building plans what they're going to have to put aside. So they may be over 50,000 in the amount they have to put in under the existing regulation. I think that's probably why you came up with this cap idea, that at least for the present, we can put the cap at $50,000. To me, that makes some sense. I was actually for a lower cap, but then Member Jackson convinced me that there's reasons to worry about other things there. Because I just assumed that no one's going to tear down more trees than they have to, but we, you know, but they do. And so maybe the long-term solution on this is you don't let anybody do a tear down or rebuild, you don't let them tear down trees other than what's on the building pad. They got to leave everything else. Because we've got so many factual distinctions and scenarios going here and what-ifs, that it's hard to figure out what the language ought to be in an ordinance, without being subject to legal attack.
If we applied that logic to these unbuilt lots, though, what we're saying is we're carving out the entirety of that space plus buffer, that they can tear down those trees within that space, right? That would be your footprint of the existing house, right? And so that's where, when your concern is, well, what if what's outside of that is still up to 50,000, well, those are all then trees that they didn't have to cut down.
Yeah, true. Well, and it actually may, you know, they may end up owing less than 50,000, who knows?
So I do have one other point on this.
Here, it's us. We're almost on another track.
Well, I got another rabbit hole. So going back to
It's not June 5th yet.
Going back to paragraph 14. Well, first of all, I want to say, I did talk to John Hogan, and I think that's why you're standing up here, and who wrote the report and really led this effort. So he has looked at it, he has been working. And I want to thank Director Vetter and Luther for working with him and looping him in. He was very grateful for that. And so a lot of the comments that I'm talking about are ones that he and I kind of negotiated.
Who is this?
John Hogan, who wrote the report. He's a member of the Energy and Environment Commission. And so he has been working with us. He was part of this plan. And so, you know, he, it went through his eyes and had his approval before we got here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That's the point I wanted to make, is that while the EEC has not formally looked at this and made a comment or recommendation on it, John Hogan is the vice chair of the Energy and Environment Commission, and two additional members attended your first work session. And I think at that point, they did acknowledge the fact that the unbuilt lot was not a discussion point, because it was thought of that rarity in the community, and it was not addressed that time. So while they have not seen it or made a recommendation on this language, they are in support of finding a remedy for the, excuse me, unbuilt lot within this, within this ordinance. So that's the only point I wanted to make.
Yes, thank you. So going back to paragraph 14, we talked about using the notice of purpose, the range of notices gets sent out for a redevelopment or, you know, a building permit. That's not written in here. I would like to see that written in here. I think that's a really good rule, because it's the character of the neighborhood. So
What are you suggesting, no, for language?
So it says, "The tree replacement may be fulfilled by planting at a different site from their home. The different site can be private or public land at the choice of city staff." I'd like to lift that language that comes out from the notification language to who gets notified when a house is getting a building permit. So it's like within a half mile. I don't know how, exactly what it is. But that notification distance is where the tree needs to be planted within. So we can't say, my neighbor can say, oh, I've got a cabin, I need a new tree up at the cabin. That's a new tree being planted. But this
In the city limits.
Well, that, so I'm throwing this out there, you can say no.
But is that the choice of the city staff? So the city staff could say no to the lake cottage idea.
Okay. But I guess part of it is
Especially with Mayor Neal's lake cottage.
So the question is, and this is maybe for Luther, but who, would it be better to have it written into the ordinance to take some of the pressure off, or do you want the flexibility of being able to say, yeah, that works at this time? But what would, what would work better for the implementation of this?
I think the flexibility is, you know, nice.
Okay.
I agree. I mean, we can, we can adopt a working rule that uses that as kind of the preference and do it when we can. But having some flexibility in case we're running into odd situations would be good, I think, for this.
Okay, well, I wanted to throw that idea out there. You know, I like the idea of keeping it in the character of the neighborhood. So those were my thoughts.
On 14, I've got a suggestion on the language addition. So it says, "A different site can be private or public land at the choice of city staff." And then it says, period. And it says, "City controls," I think it should say, "City staff controls." And it says, "Where?" And I think it should also say, "And when?" The planting will happen and the species of the trees will be planted, that will be planted. So I would add city, I would add word "staff" after "city" in the last sentence and add the words "and when," interlineate "and when" after the word "where." So the last sentence reads, "City staff controls where and when the planting will happen, and the species of the trees that will be planted." Make sense?
Makes sense.
Yep, that makes sense. I like that.
All right. And then what are we going to do about, Member Agnew's suggestion of dumping that last sentence in 15? Comfortable with that for now?
And how soon are we expecting to have all the other resolutions, the other issues resolved, commercial?
Well, the commercial, I think, is going to be ready for the next, for June 18th, is it, is it not?
Well, no, we were going to tie it to many of the other points you're talking about tonight. How's, are you doing progressive? Are you doing all the things you've been kind of discussing? We were going to tie that in to the commercial. So we're kind of seeing what council decides on residential. And make sure they're all locked up, not that we approve something that's different.
Okay, so we keep saying "commercial."
You could say "all other land."
I apologize. I did say "commercialize." But all the other zones where there happened to be trees planted, how long is it going to take us to come back with resolving those issues?
So strike the last sentence on 15A.
So if I may, I'd like to have the report come in, and then we can say, in this blank space, we're going to make it tie with the, how it's resolved with the residential. I think we, if we had that in the hopper, ready to go, and we get these other things, then we can do it all at once. I'd like to hear from the Energy and Environment Commission on their commercial ideas.
The other zone ideas.
The others, yes, excuse me, the other zone ideas. And then if they have fuzzy areas, where this has fuzzy areas, we resolve them all at once. Is that, you're, so we have an existing tree ordinance that's residential. We have a set of proposals we might adopt tonight. We have a set of proposals that we're going to get more information on. And we have then other zones.
Basically, what the EEC put together for all other zoning areas was just a match of the residential.
Oh, okay.
So there's not any big changes. There was like one point that staff wanted to keep with the commercial ordinance that had so many trees around the perimeter. Otherwise, they just wanted to match the residential side. So I think you have a lot of questions on residential. All this would come together with the commercial.
Okay. So I just, I'm thinking about their, their timing and stuff. You know, I want to hear from them, but I also don't want to have to go through the whole cycle of both our meetings and the EEC meetings to get them here and delay it by six weeks or something.
Well, plus, you need, remember too, that we, our next meeting is June 18th, and then our next meeting after that is July 16th. So we have a month break in between.
Yeah, so if we could hear from them sooner rather than later, unless they want to weigh in on all, on all the fuzzy areas.
Director Vetter?
I was just going to make the clarification, Mayor and Council, that if you are interested in the progressive calculation, us looking at that more, I think staff would be supportive of a cap tonight, as long as you recognize that going forward, that we could come back with potentially something better to address some of these concerns with a different type of formula. So I think you could do what's in the proposed language this evening. So I think you could do what's in the proposed language this evening, and then we could try to bring back something better, if you are interested in that progressive style of view.
Remember Agnew? You comfortable with that staff recommendation?
So what we're talking about is likely a matter of $1,232.50 for one property, right? Because it's the only one that's, it's at 51, 232.50 right now, so there's only one that's not on an unbuilt lot that we're talking about. And so I'm not going to go against staff recommendation for $1,200, but I would just say, in general, I, it makes me uncomfortable to think about a fixed flat rate cap when some of the properties that we're talking about, you know, are being sold for $2.3 million. That would be a 2%, right? And we're not talking about 500, 700,000-dollar homes that are being bought and sold, we're talking about millions of dollars. And so that's where I say, whether it's $1,200 or 50,000, you know what I mean? Like, that little wiggle room there doesn't really matter. So I'm fine if we want to say, leave the language as is for this time around, but what I, I don't want to see is us doing a fixed cap, long-term.
So staff, you're recommending that we leave that last sentence in 15A, and just make that other word change?
I think you recommended changes to 14, section 14, which was city staff, where and when. And then the other one was, proposed this evening was an establishment of a cap, and I think we recognize that does potentially also, we don't know the calculations on the unbuilt lots yet, about where that would be, so that would also apply to them, potentially, as long as you are open. I think that was our hope, is that if we could come back with something on that incentivized scale, then would the council then remove the cap if that, that was an option, so?
But I'm not going to vote for it. I don't like the grading scale. I think it should be capped. I think it's dangerous for us to have a conversation saying, "Well, these houses are $2 million houses, they can afford to pay more," because that's where we're going to end up going. And I'm just telling you, I'm uncomfortable with that, just because it feels like we're focused on the wrong thing. If we want to protect the trees, we have to find a way to protect the trees with a policy that everybody can support, that's not, that doesn't feel like it's punitive. And so I'm okay with addressing the issue for the two that we started with. I'm okay with that, but whatever, but we need to do the work to then come back to address all the zones, but I'm just telling you, I'm not going to vote for-
Progressive.
For progressive. Yeah, I would prefer there be a-
Or a percent.
Or a percent, yeah. And I don't need to, right? It's-
Tonight, you don't need to worry about that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I, and we don't have to debate that.
No.
At all.
Yeah, and, and I won't vote for a cap, so.
At some future date.
At any date.
Even tonight.
I will not vote for a cap tonight or in the future.
With respect to this, I mean, okay.
Yeah.
All right, let's find out where we are. So what I understand, what you've got in front of us here is, the changes that are highlighted deal with amending the ordinance 2024-04, and then we made a, a language change on the last sentence of paragraph 14. That's the extent of what we're going to, what staff's recommending we do tonight and adopt it in its amended form with that language change on 14. We got a sidebar going over here again.
We're just trying to figure out if we're, if you are going to vote on this tonight, and you need to waive second reading, the ordinance is in effect immediately and applies to existing permits, so.
And it's a four-fifths vote to waive second reading.
Well, let's see where it goes, and then we'll, if we don't get it, we'll find four-fifths some other way.
If I may.
Pardon me?
May I, may I speak?
Do you want to have a motion and a second, and then have a more discussion, or you want to just speak now? That doesn't matter to me.
Well, I mean, I like the changes. I am uncomfortable with a cap, and I think it's a perverse incentive. I think that what will happen is, everybody who's thinking of clearing, cutting a lot, they're, they're going to come out and clear-cut in the time between now and when we have a change to this, so.
Agnew, what are you thinking?
I'm thinking we start with a motion, and then maybe one of us makes a recommendation for the amendment for that one component, and we just get the vote on it.
Okay.
Well, wait a minute. I mean, if we got two people that are against the cap, then you're not going to waive second reading, because we need four-fifths for that, so why even go into that first step?
I was suggesting making the motion to approve it as written with your adjustment to chapter, or paragraph 14.
All right.
And then for someone to do potentially a follow-on, I forget how the-
Amendment?
Amendment for that piece, so we could vote on just the cap in and of itself, and then address the bulk of the body, if that's how Robert's rules work.
All right, so-
Yeah, I agree.
So you're make, you-
So I'll, I'll make a motion.
You make the motion to adopt the amendments to 2024-04 with the change we made to paragraph 14.
So moved.
Second. Here she, remember, Risher?
So as is, so second.
Okay, and now we got a motion, a second, and you want more discussion?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment to this, and that is to eliminate the cap in paragraph 15A, the last sentence, the maximum cap escrow or letter of credit shall be $50,000.
A second.
Question on the amendment?
I believe it creates a perverse incentive to clear-cut lots, and I'm not in favor of that.
So the, we're just going to vote on the amendment, whether or not you agree that the $50,000 credit cap should be stricken?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so I'm just clarifying that the reason that the cap was suggested was primarily, at this stage, to address the two issues that exist. And so if we strike that, then there, then we go back, then those two issues go back to the max escrow.
They, they're on the unbuilt lots, and so the portion that is within the buildable area, including the buffer, would be removed, so making this up, right, if it's 20% of it, that would then be removed.
That will be removed.
So assuming that they remove trees that are in the building pad and the buffer, the amount that they're required to pay would be decreased, put in escrow.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Wait, the way the, right, the way the, the way the proposed amendment reads now, or not the amendment to the amendment, but the amendment is, as I understand it, that in that situation that you just described, you've got the free zone-
Yeah.
And then to the extent they tear down any other trees, it would be subject to the $50,000 cap.
Right, yeah.
The amendment to the amendment proposes that, that cap language be eliminated, so that there's potentially greater protection for tree canopy.
So there'd still be the free zone?
Yeah, still the free zone.
It's just the outside of the free zone that we're discussing.
So, and you've heard a discussion on the amendment. All those in favor of adoption of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed. Motion carries, the cap is removed. Now we're back to the main motion, without the cap language on 15A. All those in favor of adoption of the original motion to amend ordinance 2024-04 with the change on section 14, and now the last sentence of paragraph 15A eliminated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, and waiver of second reading included.
Wait, say that again?
Let's make that a second, a separate motion, to waive second reading.
Separate action.
Okay, all right, forget that second reading thing.
State it again?
We're, we're voting on adoption of the main amendment.
Yeah.
But without the language of 15A, last sentence, no more cap. We're at the, we're at the original formulation for figuring out what they have to pay if they go outside the free zone, or the exempt zone.
Without a cap.
Okay. All those in favor of adoption of the amendment described for 2024-04, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing.
Nay.
Oh, nay.
Yeah, but I, so that, that's fine. Nay.
Okay.
So I'm going to move waiving the second reading.
I thought you said-
There's a second?
I thought you said two different things, but.
This is the second thing. We're going to waive the second reading.
There's a second to the motion to waive second reading?
Second.
Jackson moves, remember, Agnew's second, waiver of second reading on the ordinances, amendment to the ordinance is approved. Any further discussion? All those in favor of a waiver of second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Hearing. You know, I still see, as we've, I hate to keep talking about this, but it's, it's pretty fascinating. It says, "If a heritage tree is removed, it must be replaced with a protected tree." I don't, I don't see in here where it says that you're defaulting or you're forfeiting the money that you put in escrow.
These fees are considered owed to the city and retained permanently.
Okay, there you go. Thanks. What, you got anything they want to talk about? All right, we're on to Manager Neal.
I don't have any report tonight, thank you.
Here, Council comments, Member Risher, going to lead us off, we'll go right down the line.
Well, I spent a good part of Sunday with my colleagues, Member Agnew and Member Jackson, and we really received an excellent training from Edina firefighters and got to, got to experience some of the aspects of being a firefighter, and putting on the gear, feeling how heavy that is, and all of that, and I just want to give a shout-out to them. And one of the things that I think about a lot, partly because in another part of my life, I think about PFOS, and how that is a carcinogen, and I have been battling cancer, and firefighters have a higher rate of getting cancer, and that was on my mind a lot during the training, just thinking about, you know, how tough it is to battle that battle, but to be in a career that is so intense and so much about service, and I just really want to thank the Edina firefighters and underscore how important their work is and how challenging it can be, and the reality that for some types of cancer, your risk of getting it, if you are a firefighter, is 10 times higher than general population. So shout-out to Edina's firefighters.
Thank you for that.
Well, I want to, thank you. I want to thank the fire department as well. I was thinking about forest fires, actually. I mean, I was terrified, the, we took the hose in and put out a fire in a fairly controlled space, and I was terrified of that fire. I can't imagine being out in the wilderness trying to put out a forest fire. Kudos to all our firefighters, it's, they just do an incredible job. It's physically demanding, it's emotionally demanding, mentally demanding, and, and I'm so grateful for the job that they do. I want to thank Ben Kinney especially for organizing it. We had another successful Edina art fair. I really enjoyed it. I hope people got out between the raindrops. I was out in the sunshine, it was beautiful. And then, in the interim between our last meeting and now, I attended a webinar on ADA policy for cities, and that prompted me to write to Manager Neal and say, "Hey, do we have a transition plan?" And we do. The city of Edina adopted an American Disabilities Act transition plan on March 25th, 2022. Amy Murray is our coordinator for that. And as we're looking at our capital improvement plan, I hope that we can kind of highlight things that are happening that are making things more accessible as we go forward. So that's my ask, and again, kudos, thank you very much to the firefighters, that was really eye-opening.
Thank you. Member Pierce?
I am really bummed that I did not get a chance to do the firefighter training with my colleagues, but I wouldn't have traded it for the world. My aunt in Michigan, Saginaw, Michigan, turned 100, and so we had her birthday celebration that Saturday, and then into Sunday, and so that's why I missed it. I should have brought a picture, just to show everybody, but anyway, and that is also why I missed the art fair. We were out of town. So glad to be back, and just looking forward to spending some time at home in Edina, before we go to Chicago this weekend for my daughter's graduation from Northwestern, so, that's it.
She's already graduating?
Yeah.
Oh, he smokes.
Yeah.
Agnew?
I'll just echo my appreciation for Sunday. You know, I'd already gone on the ride-along, just like two weeks prior, so I was like, "Oh, I, I know what this is going to be like," and I was so wrong. And I, I think I really took for granted, like, how physical of a, a job it really is. Like, you put on all the gear, and like, you, your, like, mobility is so, like, limited, and it was, it was eye-opening, it was an amazing experience, and I, I just really appreciate everyone who put together that day, Ben Kinney included, I know that he led that effort. But I just think it's a really wonderful opportunity that they, they offered to us in the city, and I know that they've done it other times for other members of the community. We also had other administrative staff that were a part of that as well, and also invited in Hopkins to partner with us, just given that they are newly a part of our firefighters' union, I believe is the correct way to say that. I think that was the only thing that I had for this week, but yeah, it was just a really, really wonderful experience. Oh, and I'll just, I'll echo one of the things that Member Risher mentioned about cancer rates, and it's, it's startling, right, when you start to look at some of that data. So just really, really, truly appreciate all of the work that they do for our city, for our community. We talked a lot about response rates, and, and this was specifically, you know, I think to cardiac arrest, but like, Edina is really, really great from a save rate, from a response rate perspective, and it just makes me really proud to, to be a part of the city, so, thank you.
Glad to kind of laugh at myself. On Sunday, I told my wife, "I'm going to run out to the police and fire training facility, they got some kind of demonstration out there," and so I had a nice casual clothes- And so I had nice casual clothes on, and I had no idea what was going on. I got I was surprised to see you guys out there. Then you're all dressed up in gear. And I thought, where did I miss the the communication here? This wasn't this wasn't them demonstrating. It was us, you know, being invited to participate. So I felt a little little foolish. But nonetheless, it was you. There was a there's a great photo out there of all three of them with their gear on. And and they were I saw them trudging in that door with the smoke pouring out. They were heading in there, all three of them. It was pretty cool. Yesterday, we had a regional council of mayors meeting over at Microsoft. And so it was they invited the mayors over to get a backgrounding on AI and all the platform work that that Microsoft is doing on AI. So Microsoft is spending $8 billion a quarter, $8 billion a quarter on AI to stay ahead of the game. And so they invited us to come over as a council, as department heads. Staff could figure out who should be coming. Because we're going to we're going to need to know more about this. And getting a little backgrounding on it, James with his technology background probably feels pretty comfortable. But I thought it was really quite valuable and enlightening to have that experience for an hour. And they invited the school district, too. And I thought, well, we've got that meeting with them, I think, on Monday. We could talk about it then. And we could all do it together. They've got plenty of ability there to go over there. And they've got great presenters and spend an hour over there getting backgrounded on AI and seeing all the things there's even even through their PowerPoint, they were using examples of things that cities could do in terms of building inspection with with specialized gear that, you know, takes notes as you're going. You just talk to the headgear and and other things that can be done. So let's keep that in mind. I think it's a nice opportunity for us to spend an hour that way. We could do it over a noon hour and have lunch brought in. That's it for me. Anything else? Luther, any final words you want to share with us?
A the best time to plant a tree was yesterday. The second best time is today.
All right. I thought you were going to say, make sure you plant a tree under which whose shade you'll never sit under if you're old enough. All right. Is there a motion adjourned?
So moved.
We got a lot of we got a unanimity on that. We don't even need a second. We're all everybody wants out of here. All those in favor of German, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stand adjourned.